All right, I'm going to call this meeting to order. It's the Board of Selecting meeting for Tuesday, March 26, 2019. Before we get going, I would ask you please join me. You'll swing the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First and foremost, thank you for meeting at 6:00. We do have a heavy agenda this evening, so we're going to jump right in. I believe the start time is 6:05. Perfect. So, first on the schedule adjutant is the National Grid pole petition for South Street. Do we have a representative? This is a public hearing. I would ask for a motion to waive the public reading, public notice reading.
Motion to waive the public hearing.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, just state your name.
My name is Paul Saffra. I'm an engineer for National Grid. The town had requested National Grid to remove a few tree guys due to the trees being removed. So, these, the next two jobs, South Street and Marston Street, are both part of that removal. So, we need to, because we're removing a guy wire from the tree, we need to keep supporting our lines and our wires because it's on a curve. We need to put another guy wire in a pole to support that structure to make sure it meets our standards. So, that's why we need to put a pole and an anchor across the road for the South Street.
Okay. We'll take care of the South Street one, and then we'll move to the Marston Street one first. So, that's referring to the South Street. Anything else to add for the South Street pole?
No.
Okay. Okay. Any questions from the board before I open up to the public?
I just, I know that you said it, and I just want to make sure. This is at the town's request to do this work. So, I just want people to understand that usually we're trying to get poles down, but this is something that the town needs to take care of. Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Any other questions regarding the petition for the South Street pole? Seeing none, at this time, I'd like to open up to the residents and earbutters that would like to speak. Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. What's the pleasure of the board for the South Street pole petition?
I make a motion to approve the National Grid pole petition for South Street, number 277-54457.
Motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Why don't we move to the Marston Street petition? First, do I have a motion to waive the public notice reading?
Motion to waive the public hearing.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Anything different? Want to talk about the Marston Street now?
Marston Street, also for the same reasons, we're removing the tree guy wire due to the town's request. So, to keep supporting our lines, we need another pole and guy wire to maintain that support.
I drove by. Okay, thank you. I'm going to open up the board for questions on that particular petition.
I'd just like to make note, Mr. Chairman, that the town is also requesting this one as well.
I drove by that one today. It did seem a little bit tight, but I did see the specs for it. So, at this time, are there any earbutters that would like to speak? Seeing none, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
What is the pleasure of the board for the Marston Street pole petition?
I'll make a motion to approve the National Grid petition of Marston Street, number 277-54538.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Carries. Thank you very much. All right. It's perfect. It's 6:10. So, Mr. Martor, are you actually going to share a projection?
Yep.
Okay.
Setup.
As you get there, so next on the agenda, we'll call it the senior tax relief presentation. So, just for the residents' sake, so part when we're doing your, oh, when we're doing your goals and reviewing roles and responsibilities and doing your goals in the fall, the question came up, what can we do for our seniors? Meaning, there's a lot of programs out there at the federal level, the state level, and some at the local level, but what else can we do for a community? Because we know the property taxes are rising, and we have a very senior population, probably the highest in the Merrimack Valley. So, we said, let's leave no stone unturned. What can we do as a community, whether it's a first or a second or a third, or we reuse programs from other towns or communities? What can we do? Let's put everything on the table to see if we can help our seniors. So, what the purpose for today is, Richard's going to review what Richard put together, and I believe it was the director of finance at the town assessor. He's going to, we're going to review the senior tax relief presentation, and the plan would be to then take it to the Finance Committee, and then take it to the Council on Aging, and then come back at a later date when we have time to really dig our teeth into this and say, you know, which of the recommendations that Richard will review that we can or can't act upon. So, again, this is really just to socialize, bring awareness to what Richard and staff came up with. I would anticipate we're not going to make any motions, but you never know. So, that's really the whole premise of the presentation and how it came about.
Okay. Perfect. So, I have a brief PowerPoint on a walk through. So, during the presentation, I want to talk about the existing programs that we offer to seniors for tax relief. Then I want to talk about other programs in general that are offered to seniors. I wanted to review any potential programs or options that are always available. Some are options that I'll discuss any concerns with, and then at the end, I'll go through conclusions and recommendations that the board should consider at a later date. So, the existing programs, which is, what is interesting is there is a fair amount of existing programs that we currently offer through the assessor's office for seniors. The first is, and they all revolve around Mass. General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5. The first being Mass. General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 41(c). And this is for elderly residents who are 65 years or older, and they may qualify for $100 tax credit.
Five.
Five hundred, yeah. $500 tax credit. The Commonwealth reimburses for the first 92 eligible seniors. Any seniors that are eligible and qualify after that, the town would fund through its overlay. A town meeting can also increase this amount to $1,000 if they wish to do so, but the Commonwealth will only reimburse the town $500 for the first 92. And again, the remaining amounts will come from the assessor's overlay. There are income requirements for the program, as there are with most of these exemptions and abatements. The requirements for this particular program for a single individual is $20,000 plus cost of living adjustments per year, and assets that don't exceed $30,000 plus cost of living adjustments. If it's a married couple that owns a home, the income requirement is less than $30,000 plus the cost of living adjustments not to exceed assets of $55,000. The other requirement for this clause, 41(c), is they have to live in Massachusetts for 10 years, and they must own and occupy the house they're in for at least five years. The second item, the second offer, offering from the assessor's office for an exemption is Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 17d. This is an exemption in the amount of $175. In order to qualify for 17d, a senior must be 70 years old by July 1, and a surviving spouse must be a widow or a widower by July 1. Again, this is means-based, and you must qualify for this. In these, in all these circumstances, the total worth may not exceed $40,000 excluding the assessed value of the home. The third is Mass. General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 22. These are various exemptions for veterans and their spouses, ranging from $400 to paying for the full amount of the taxes owed on the property. In order to qualify, you must be, must have certification of a war-related disability, and you also cannot have been dishonorably discharged. The fourth is Mass. General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 37a. This clause, Clause 37a, applies to those who are legally blind as of July 1, and the tax credit is $500. And again, in order to qualify, you must be registered with the Massachusetts Commission of the Blind, for the line.
Richard, are there any costs of value with that, with how much they make on that one?
There wasn't any other values or other means on that one. Thank you. The sixth item, the sixth exemption is, I missed one at the bottom. The fifth one, actually, the fifth one, I'm sorry, is Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 41a. It's a tax deferral for residents 65 years or older. They can defer all or a portion of their property taxes and water and sewer bills at a rate of 5% interest. In order to qualify, residents must have lived in Massachusetts for the past 10 years and be owned and occupied their house for the last five. Their gross annual income must not exceed $58,000 for a single, $73,000 for head of household, and $88,000 for married couples. Item six, this is an exemption from the Community Preservation Act surcharge that we have in the community for those age 60 or over. It's a 100% exemption from the surcharge. There is an income requirement based for this particular exemption, and it's based on the U.S. HUD area-wide median income, and you must own and occupy the home as your primary residence. The next program is something we've had in town for many years or a few years. It's the Senior Citizens Tax Work Off Program, which allows seniors to work in various town offices and receive a maximum of $1,500 to be applied towards their property tax bill. Participants in the program must be 60 years of age or older. At the time of service, they must own and occupy a property in Tewksbury. Taxes are paid, and rebate is requested. The homeowner or the spouse is the homeowner, domiciled, or residing in the home, and the owner of the property to which the reduction of real estate may be granted, unless, again, reside in the home. And, again, it's a maximum of $1,500. We have individuals who work the full, work for the full amount, those that work for part of the amount. It varies depending on the individual's time and the jobs that we have each year. But this is the maximum that's allowed at this time by the Commonwealth, and we range anywhere from 30 to 40 individuals on an annual basis. The difficulty in this particular program is having enough jobs for seniors and having seniors who are actually qualified for the jobs. So, for instance, we may have, we may look for people to do cleaning in buildings or data entry, and we look for people who have those qualifications. Some people don't want to do that work. Some people aren't skilled to do that work. So, they have to, you know, be able to do that. We also try to give preference to those who meet certain income guidelines, and most of the time, we have enough individuals interested that meet those guidelines.
Can I ask a story? I know that this is based on an hourly rate, and I believe that currently it is at $12 an hour, but it is moving to be
Minimum wage.
Minimum wage. To $15 an hour.
It'll be adjusted for the changes in minimum wage.
So, every year, it's going up, so they'll have to work less hours.
Just less hours, yeah.
And for this one here, Mr. Martor, there's no, there's no fixed income?
We do have an income guideline for this that we use, use the assessors, some guidelines from the assessor's office, and each year, it just, it changes. But we've given, we've given preference to seniors who are more in need based on their income.
Okay.
Also, for this particular program, for a town meeting in May, we annually have appropriated $52,000, $25,000 a year. This year, we have upped that to $52,500. And that, if, if all the seniors take advantage of $1,500 that is allowed, that's about 35 seniors that can take advantage of the program.
Do you have historical numbers on this? I recall the numbers used to be 17 to 20, so I think there was a
Yeah. So, this kicked off in 2012. We had 52 applicants who placed 28 based on the number of positions that we had. In 2013, we had 44 applicants. We placed 43 of them. In 2014, we had 38 applicants. We placed 32 of them. Again, this is based on jobs and income guidelines that we had. In 2015, we had 34 applicants. We placed 31. In 2016, we had 34 applicants. We placed 30. 2017, we had 37 applicants. We placed 32. This year, we had 40. We placed 31 so far, but there's still some that may be placed because this was partial. From a placement standpoint, we have an average of 83% placement of seniors. So, I think we've done pretty well. The next, number eight, Massachusetts State Circuit Breaker. This allows Massachusetts residents the ability to claim refundable credit on their personal state income tax each year. There are income guidelines for this also. It also allows, it allows them to get an exemption for those who not only own a house, but those who rent, and the income, the guidelines change depending on which. But if you are, if you occupy a property as a primary residence and have an annual income of $58,000 or less, you're eligible as a single filer; $73,000 or less for head of household; and $88,000 for joint filing. So, that's on your state income tax. In 2018, the maximum credit was $1,100. In 2016, based on information, we have 737 residents in Tewksbury claim circuit breaker for a total exemption of $685,597. It was an average of $930 per resident. And again, that was on their state income tax. Number nine, Chapter 60, Section 3d. It's an elderly and disabled taxation fund. The town accepted this statute, and we have elderly and disabled taxation fund. The fund, this fund is funded through donations from residents or pledges from residents on an annual basis. The town, a few years back, would put a flyer in the tax bill asking people if they were interested in donating. We did not get a great response on it, if any, so we stopped putting the flyers in there. There is a fund right now with some money in it. In order to spend the money, we need a committee made up of the chief assessor, treasurer, collector, and residents to decide on who should receive the funding. It is to go to aid elderly and disabled residents of the community who are in need of funding to defray their real estate taxes and their persons of low income. This is something that we want to resurrect again with the tax bills going out next year. We're just trying to determine if we should do a separate flyer or actually put the donation check off on the bill itself. This is something we're going to resurrect again. It's also something if the town wishes to put some money into as a start, or we can do that in the future, and then we'll need to get, the board will need to appoint a committee over the next several months to have that in place. This is something we should look at resurrecting.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep. Start.
So, basically, these are the, these are the tax relief programs. I'm just curious how we communicate this to seniors.
We're going to get to the recommendations. That's a big part of this, is like raising awareness, because I've had veterans in my family that aren't aware of the veteran benefits until they go to seminars or what have you. So, we're going to talk about, that's going to be kind of one, one leg of the stool, is awareness through the senior center and other mechanisms. And then number two would be, how can we get creative and top of the programs that exist?
Excellent. So, in addition to the exemptions that the assessor's office provides, the programs that the assessor's office provides, there are other programs offered to seniors specifically through the senior center. We offer fuel assistance to those who qualify. There's a SNAP program, which is formerly known as the food stamp program. There's a brown bag program, which happens, I believe, every other Tuesday, which provides us food to seniors from the Greater Boston Food Bank. Obviously, there's the Tewksbury Community Pantry. There's this Shine program, which provides servicing the health information needs of everyone, not just seniors. There's income-eligible senior services from, through the Elder Services of Merrimack Valley, which they can access through our senior center. We have an AARP tax prep program at the senior center. We have veterans' benefits through the town that we have the office at the senior center that seniors can take advantage of. There are general programs run from the senior center that are either free or low cost to all seniors, from fitness programs to financial seminars to a variety of programs that they offer. The senior center also provides letters for seniors to get reimbursement from the health insurance for classes that they take at the senior center. And the senior center also employs an outreach worker who can, who can spend time going through the variety of resources that are offered to residents and make any referrals for those that are appropriate. So, I think people, again, it's part of the education program that Selecton Stronik just mentioned, that it's not only the programs that we offer from the assessor's office, but the senior center has an extraordinary amount of programs down there. In regard to potential programs that are, that we can look at as options, some that other communities offer, some that other communities have taken advantage of that we can discuss. First is a home rule petition to the state legislature that would allow the town, for a three-year period, to provide seniors who qualify based on needs test to receive a property tax exemption. There are big communities in the Commonwealth that have offered this, this program. Redding, Sudbury, Whalen, Wakefield have all offered this program through home rule, through home rule petition, where those residents who qualify for the circuit breaker that I mentioned earlier would qualify for an exemption, a property tax exemption through the assessor's office. This type of program, if offered in a community, essentially would give those seniors who qualify the tax exemption, and revenue was made up through, by being passed on to the remaining residents of the community. The other option, obviously, each year, is to reduce the tax levy by using free cash or other available funds, which gives not just seniors tax relief, but gives every taxpayer a decrease in their taxes. So, that's always an option. Using free cash or reserves to give seniors a rebate slash decrease in their property tax bills by mailing out a check, obviously, is an option. We know the federal government has done that in the past, and we'll talk about that a little bit. And then, as we talked about during the budget process, you know, not going to the proposition two and a half levy limit is always an option, which keeps taxes lower than they would normally go up, but not give a tax reduction of any sort, just taxes wouldn't go up as high as they, they normally would. So, and finally, just to talk about some of the conclusions and recommendations that came out of our review of all of these programs, again, to what was just passed by Selecton Stronik, we need to improve our awareness and increase marketing of the current programs that exist for seniors to take advantage, that they can take advantage of. We need to use a website better. We need to hold informational sessions down at the senior center, at town hall. We need to disseminate more information in tax bills, also at the senior center, through their newsletter. We need to utilize the telemedia department that's in place to broadcast more information to seniors. But we all agree that getting information about all of these programs will be beneficial for seniors. My second recommendation would be to work with the delegation to pass legislation that would allow communities to, if they accept a certain state statute, to provide property tax exemptions similar to the home rule petitions that I mentioned, without having to have their own home rule petition that only lasts for three years. The state delegation should get more involved in, in doing that. I know the Assessors Association is trying to pass legislation of that type, and that will let every city and town decide if they want to accept that state statute to provide property tax exemption for seniors who qualify. Work the delegation, again, to increase income, income thresholds and needs tests for all the programs that we mentioned earlier, to allow us to caption more seniors to be eligible for these exemptions. As you can see from those thresholds that I mentioned earlier, if they're raised even just a little bit, they'll help caption more seniors. We could talk about asking town meeting to increase the 41(c) exemption from $500 to $1,000 and adjust the income limits within that clause. Again, this will provide seniors with more of a tax exemption, even though the town would have to fund that through the overlay. It would provide more of a tax exemption, but also, if we can increase the limits, the income limits, we'll be able to caption more seniors, so that'll be a positive thing. Can add additional funding to the senior tax release program, but as I mentioned earlier, we already did that, so we can kind of check that one, that box off. We should resurrect the elderly and disabled taxation fund and get a committee in place in the next several months to administer that fund to those seniors who are in need and those disabled residents who may qualify. I would not recommend using free cash or other resources to lower the tax levy. I think that's a false tax reduction. It only impacts us with a bigger tax increase the following year. It also takes away need of reserves for capital improvements that we need to make in this town, so I would never recommend using our reserves or free cash to reduce the tax levy. I would also never recommend not taxing to the full levy limit, because based on the budget needs, both operating and capital, we need to raise all of the revenue that we can to fund those budgets. And then finally, I would recommend, one of the recommendations we want to look at and talk about more that came out of our discussions as a financial team, was to provide those seniors who are allowed 41(c) or 17d exemption from the Board of Assessors, that they are eligible for a 10% discount on their water and sewer bills. That's it. I know I covered a lot around in a short period, but we offer a lot in the community. The other thing is, even for individuals who do not qualify for any of these programs, if they feel their assessment is too high, they can always apply for an abatement, and that'll be looked at by the Board of Assessors. But we offer a lot of programs already through the assessor's office, through the Council on Aging. We have, you know, aid recommendations here. I think we'll give the board something to think about, to talk about with the Finance Committee, bring back to the Council on Aging, and then circle back in a couple of months to decide which way we want to go.
Very good. Questions? Comments from the board? Mr. Crabb?
Yeah, I believe, I mean, looking at those numbers that, qualifications, I mean, those thresholds are very low, and that we should reach out to our delegation and see if those numbers can be raised a little bit to get a couple more seniors involved in these programs. Like you mentioned, $30,000 and a couple of them, $40,000, that's, we're not going to get a lot of, unfortunately, we may get a couple of them, but I think we need to see if we can get the, get a petition through to change that law, to raise the, cost of living goes up every year. It's something that should go up with the delegation to be able to change that, to get more seniors involved. that, to get more seniors involved.
Very good. Mr. Johnson?
I just, excuse me, I would piggyback on what Mark just indicated. I think in particular, the state circuit breaker needs to be looked at, but that's not a local issue, it's a statewide issue. But if we have 750 or so residents who are taking advantage of that, there's a lot of opportunity there if the exemption were increased, or as Mark just mentioned, perhaps some of the income guidelines adjusted for inflation or, you know, current day cost of living. So, I would absolutely support any kind of correspondence from this board to our delegation to raise awareness and solicit their support for something like that on a statewide level.
Mr. Brian Dick?
A couple of quick comments. So, I would say, believe in good communication and education is a great way to start, and I think we're, I think that's, has been done in the past, but there's more awareness tonight, which is a good, positive thing from the board and the town manager. I do think, you know, there are some things in Tewksbury that we offer, which is pretty encouraging, when you talk about the Town Senior Tax Relief Volunteer Program. I was on the school committee and saw a lot of seniors in that, doing that, and they enjoyed that. You know, I think a lot of seniors like getting involved in that, so they can earn some money towards that. It's good to hear it's going to go to minimum wage, so that's a great, great thing. And then town meeting, we increased that, you know, that bucket of money, so that's a good thing. And then, it sounds like we're going to resurrect that elderly and disabled taxation fund, so that's a positive with this discussion. And, you know, we'll have some work to do with that, forming committee and things, but I believe it's, I believe, you know, again, Tewksbury's moving in the right direction for our seniors. There's always more that we can do. I do agree with town manager on his recommendation on not to use the free cash. I believe that's good fiscal policy that we practice in town, so I appreciate him mentioning that in his discussion. The abatement process, he just mentioned that, that's something we can, that's out there for all residents. And I agree with my board members on the delegation, let's reach out to them and see what they can do to help us. And, you know, that last one, number eight there in my list, the, those seniors that qualify for 41(c) or 17d exemption, I'd be into that, you know, a 10% senior discount on water and sewer bills, so I could support something like that. So, those are my comments. I appreciate this presentation and the hard work that the committee did, I guess, town, that was that?
Yeah, the financial team.
Financial team, so it's good to hear that, you know, again, we generally care about increasing taxes and senior relief, so today's a positive, it's only the beginning. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Mr. Stronik?
So, first of all, Mr. Chairman, I know that we discussed this in the budget, but I do want to thank you for your leadership of tasking a very talented team to get this report to us tonight. I think it's comprehensive. I think, similar to the comments that are made, communication and education, there's never enough of that when it comes to letting people know what programs are available. I would love it if we could put some kind of flyer thing at the library, like a senior table or something like that, with notices of these kinds of things. I completely agree with the recommendation of number eight as well. I think that's something that would be very successful, and I think that we could be able to manage that through retained earnings without having an impact on other residents. I am concerned with some of the home rule petition that would just pass the revenue on to other residents. I don't, you know, I don't think that the seniors would want to be a burden on anybody in our community. I think they take a lot of pride in that, and I love the fact that we're doubling the town volunteer, and I totally would support the delegation. But while we're talking about the delegation, I would love it if we could find a way in Massachusetts to use one income guideline rather than the multiple income guidelines, and I think that that makes it very confusing for people, because they think because they qualify for one, they're upset that they don't qualify for others, that may be more advantageous to them. So, while we're putting out the feelers, I don't think that we would be alone in that type of request. I think that people would welcome that. So, I think if we are going to take the time to make that ask, I think we should also ask them to take a look at that, because I think that would be advantageous. You know, it's hard for me to juggle all of those kind of things, and I think that that is something else we should think of considering when talking to the delegation. Thank you.
Very good. Just to add some comments here, you know, working with the seniors now for about half of two years in this position, you know, we do have a huge senior contingency base that they grew up in this town, they raised their family this town, they're volunteering in this town across all committees, so I think it was, this is a good first step to take a hard look and say, what's the saying, put your money where your mouth is. So, this is a very good first step. I totally get at the delegation level, you know, we talked about that, totally agreed, but I do believe after reviewing this, and again, I know the residents don't have this paperwork, they'll see the particular PowerPoint, but as far as recommendations and conclusions, I have number one, number four, number five, number six, and number eight, we can all do it at the local level. So, I absolutely think, even like I said, raising awareness. I bring the example of a veteran in my family not knowing the benefits until he was exposed to all the things he didn't know. And I have the same suspicion that some of the stuff, the very stuff that we talked about, we just have to raise awareness. So, I think it's a very good first step to take, to take action. And look, you know, this isn't going to solve, what is the saying, solve world hunger. However, if it's 50 bucks, 100 bucks, and when taxes go up, 180 per year, again, just as a baseline, that's a significant percentage, reducing the tax burden on seniors. So, very, very good first step, positive direction. I definitely think we can act at the local level across these. So, the game plan would be to go to the Council on Aging, present this, socialize it, potentially have working sessions. Mr. Montori, on your office, I would like to bring this to the FinCom. Obviously, there might be dollars and cents to tie into some of these recommendations if we actually put those into action, but I think a very, very positive first step. I know we all deeply care for our seniors, and like I said, it's not, anything counts, anything little counts, and I think it's a very good first step. So, those are my comments. So, very good job by team and staff.
Mr. Chairman, just one other tag on to that, because I think it's important we don't lose sight of it. Some of these benefits apply, as was described, for veterans specifically and disabled specifically, but I know the focus of the discussion is about seniors, but we shouldn't lose sight of the fact that we have many disabled in town, and they are essentially the same or worse strait. So, I think we have to keep that in mind as we look at this, and I understand and respect the need to be careful with, you know, shifting of funds, because it has impacts on other people, but I don't think we should lose sight of that as well. So, as we talk about this, I think we need to have a broader bucket, if you will, just in terms of those other categories that could be affected by things like this.
Yep, very good call out. And I think on the work program, we do have veterans in there as well, so very good call out. And that's the thing, that's the, we just talked about the state level, what's the income, what's the age? We talked about age, income, income plus assets, income plus housing value, so there are so many different variables across all these, you know, existing programs and potentially programs that we could implement at the local level. So, you're right, I need to be wary of that, you know, because even saying the word seniors, broad, what is that, 55, 65, you know, so it's just, so good, good call out.
I'm almost there.
I am.
All right, any other questions from the board? All right, very good. Thank you, Mr. Montori.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda, let's look and take a quick peek. We have 6:44, and I think our next schedule is for seven o'clock, so we're a little bit ahead of time. So, maybe, Mr. Montori, what if we bounce to town manager? If you have some ideas?
Sure, I should have one item on the agenda. Town council invoice, February 16th, 2019, through February 28th, 2019, in the amount of $2,008.25, and I would recommend approval.
Motion.
I'll make that motion based on the town manager's recommendation.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimous. How about the line of march? Mr. Montori, do you want to cover that under?
Yes.
Your section?
So, this was added, laid out to a revised agenda. The Historic Society is going to be holding their annual line of march on...
April 7.
April 7th, 2019, at 1:00 p.m. This is something they do every year, where they set up in the common, then four groups march into the center from four different directions. They go down East Street to Lee Street, and then end up at the library for a final ceremony to commemorate the Revolutionary War line of march that took place in the town. So, that's, again, going to happen on April 7th, 2019, at 1:00. And each year, the board has reviewed this and given their approval for Historic Society to hold their line of march contingent upon them getting approval from the police department for any public safety issues.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Montori. Do we know if anyone, I know we, a young gentleman gave us a very good history lesson last year, so I don't know, do we know if anyone's going to come in?
No, because it was, it was a turnover, who's in charge of...
Okay.
Providing the information, just came in at the last minute tonight.
Okay, so we'd seek a motion to approve the line of march, barring all the department head signs off on the particular event. That said, do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the line of march, Tewksbury Convenience Store, on April 7th, 2019, at 1:00.
And just barring all approvals, I think, right? We still have a few approvals.
Police department only, that's the only one.
Okay, very good. Okay, so I have a motion on the table, do I have a second?
A second.
I have a motion and I have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
Great family event.
The best part is when they fire the guns, the clock kind of stops for a second, it's great. All right, just looking at the clock here, I know we have a scheduled point for seven o'clock, we still have some more, I wonder if we can, Mr. Montori, that's all on your side, correct?
Yes, you have one other new business, if you wanted to take that up.
I'd like to do that, yeah, so let's go to the new business. So, we have Tara Sam Corporation, DBA, Tewksbury Convenience Store, for change of Sunday hours application. Is this, do you know if this is a public hearing?
No.
Oh, okay.
It's just a change of hours. They basically want to open up, similar to what other places open up on Sunday.
I don't have the specifics handy right now, so just...
10:00 a.m., 10:00.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Stronik. Okay, and this is what we implemented, so they added, essentially, if they want to change hours, come in front of us per our vote on the Sunday hours.
Correct.
Okay, very good.
Be similar to it on the Sunday.
Any questions from the board?
I will offer a motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve the request for Tara Sam Corp, doing businesses, Tewksbury Convenience Store, to change their Sunday operating hours from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.
Very good, I have a motion, I have a second. You have a motion and I have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And I don't see any, Mr. Brian Dick, I don't believe we have any minutes?
No minutes today, Mr. Chair.
Very good, and I think we're right, oh, we have another 12 minutes, so I don't know if we can, if we have any new business. I was going to save the residence piece for after the presentation of the elementary school. Could I put the residents now?
Sure.
Why don't we do that, to kill some time? Would any residents like to speak at this time? Seeing none.
It's 10 seconds.
Kill a lot of time.
Oh, I'm sorry, please.
I want to talk about the...
Okay, just, just...
Actually, I think you can...
Yeah, can, actually, could I please just come right there for the microphone? And I'm also going to let folks speak, so, oops, good catch, good catch. And I'm also going to let folks speak after the presentation as well. Okay, and just name, just name and address for the record?
My name's Greg Mann, 6 Monroe Circle, I'm a butter to the school. I feel that this project for a new school is deserved. I'm not against a new school. I'm against the site proposal, because you can't put a school and football, I shouldn't say football, an athletic stadium in the same area. Every time I've talked to people about it, I keep on saying that you're infringing on wetlands. They keep on saying, no. I ask, I says, well, this corner, we had maps where they had, do not build lines, do not, you know, encroach on these lines. Now the maps have lost those lines, you don't see them now. I say that one corner of the property is going to have a road on it, another, and a corner is going to have a parking lot on it, they're going to build a practice field, which is going to cross a stream, and then they're saying they're going to fill in that area, that's going to be encroaching on wetlands. I went to the town's representative for the Conservation Commission, and I asked, I said, what about a veronal pool? Right behind my house, when the school, Ryan School, was first built, they had said that they were going to fill in a particular area behind my house. I went to some of the meetings, and I expressed a few things. One of the things was, well, are you coming up to my property line completely, or are you backing off? And I said, I said, well, if you're going to come completely, you have to put in a retaining wall, if not, you're going to have to step back. So, I came home one day, and I looked, and the retaining wall was up. I was like, great, I understand that. And I look over, and there's a pocket where the fence goes in, the retaining wall goes in, and I, the guy was still working there, and I said, what, what happened here? You know, I says, I said, I'm not going to complain, because you've moved back. He says, oh, that first, there was two ponds there, or I shouldn't say ponds, there were, yeah, there were ponds, that they were there, and they filled one of them in, and they didn't fill the other one in.
And just, I'm just for a point of record, was the construction part of the school project, or is that independent of the school project, just to alleviate drainage?
As far as I know, is that the school and the practice field were completed at the same time, and that they were both together.
What did it happen, six months ago, a year ago, or two months?
No, this is in 1997.
Okay, okay, just, okay, just for a point of reference, okay.
So, I asked, and they said, oh, we couldn't fill in this pool over here, because it's a veronal pool. I said, oh, I didn't realize that. I said, so that's the reason why the wall starts here and it goes in? So, I assumed that was a veronal pool, because that's what I was told. I do not have a person's name, I don't, I was, I was, I have to plead that I was ignorant of what was going on. I kind of said, oh, school, school, let it go. Well, I see this new school going in, and at first, it was just a school, now it's a, a school in an athletic field, and the athletic field is being built in this particular area. And I see that that veronal pool is designated as being filled in. So, I go to the Conservation Commission, the representative, and I ask, you know, what's going on here? I heard this is a veronal pool, that's the reason why they, they went around it, when they, when they, when they built this retaining wall, and they fenced it all in. She said that it's not on the site map. I said, she says, no, it's not on the state map, so we can fill it in. And I said, really? And I said, I says, I don't understand that, you know, it was, wasn't allowed before. And she said, I'm working very closely with the planners. So, I was like, it sounds like I'm not going to win anything here. So, later on, we have a meeting with the town manager and the conservation representative, and we go through the whole thing, and about what's going on and everything like that, and some of the wetlands, and we're going to walk the site, which we haven't done yet. At the very end of the meeting, she says, oh, don't be surprised if this goes through. So, I look at her, and I'm like, well, this is great, this is showing me that she is not open-minded, she's already made up her mind. So, I went back into the records on my own, and went into the minutes, and started trying to figure out what was going on with this so-called veronal pool, or whatever it was. I've gone back, and I've looked it up a few things, and one of the things, one of the things that they're stating is that, you know, that veronal pools are a resource in town, and that they are, you don't have, once, a veronal pool has to be proved not a veronal pool. So, if it's a pool, it's a veronal pool, until, and it's the builder who has to determine, has to prove that it's not a veronal pool. So, then I went back, and I was looking at my little... and I was looking at my little particular world. And it was stating things like that. Oh, the new site between the football stadium and the soccer stadium needed... The wetlands needed to be cleaned up. So, I thought, "Okay, so it's at least designated a wetlands." Then they're talking about a pocket later on of wetlands. I said, "Well, that describes this little pool." And then as I'm going further into it, they're stating, you know, like the veronal pools should be protected.
And so, really, just... And just to highlight, you know, just to carry the conversation. So, the biggest concern on your... You're a budding neighbor. So, really, the biggest concern on your side is drainage slash wetland for your property, is that?
Yeah, because right now, my... The lowest area is this pool. If they fill it in, the next lowest area is... The next lowest pot is my backyard. And I've, you know, I keep on bringing things up about how they're, you know, filling in wetlands. And they say, "No, they're not." And I say, "Yes, you are." I asked them... I asked them about Pillsbury Pond. And everybody like looked at me like I had three heads. And I says, "Well, I think they believe that there's a detention pond on site that drains into Pillsbury Pond. And I think that they might think that both of them are related and they're not." Pillsbury Pond was there 80 years before the Ryan School. And I went out there yesterday and I paced it. And it's only 25 feet from the clear cut land right now. So, they are expanding out this roadway, I'm going to say at least 50.
And just curious, have you... There's been several meetings, and I know this is the first time that I've heard that concern. Have you been to any of the public meetings?
I've been to every meeting that they've had except for one. And that one was because it was scheduled... It was scheduled on a Tuesday and I looked on Monday and saw that there was none that week and I didn't show up.
Fair enough, fair enough. So, what I'm saying is have you brought this concern up during the meetings?
I continue to bring it up all... Every time I can be there. And basically, they either just ignore what I'm saying and just say, "Oh, well, you know, we'll get back to you" or whatever. If you look at the current plan, it doesn't have Pillsbury Pond on it. They didn't realize that this pond was there. And they're still not putting it down. They have... Last time I looked, they called it detention runoff area. It's a pond. It's on... As a matter of fact, I looked into the minutes and I find it on a map. In the minutes, it doesn't state the name, but it shows it right there. I've gone to the Conservation Commission. The Conservation Commission said they can't hear anything until it comes before then. So, I've asked that. You know, so I got very little information on this, you know, back to me as to what's going on. I feel like I'm butting heads. It's like, I look at this thing, you know. When I first talked to people about this, I told them, I says, "I'm trying to save the town money." I says, "I don't think this is going to fly." I says, "I says, "You're going to run into..." Like, I thought the Conservation Commission would like shoot it down immediately. I thought the representative would look at this and say, "Oh, we can't build there." So, and it's right in the middle of the footballs... I'm sure, I shouldn't say that, the athletic field. And it cuts across their parking lot. It's a key point that if they can't... If they can't fill this in, they're not going to be able to build there. And I said, "Why are we spending all this money for all this planning and everything like that when it doesn't... It doesn't fit?"
I like to, you know, obviously, your point is noted. We're going to do... They're going to actually do a review of the presentation at 7:30. So, what I'd like to do is I'm sure that's going to come up. It's not the first time it's come up. I know residents, you know, we're going to go to the ballot. I believe it's April 7th, correct?
6th.
April 6th, thank you. We're going to go to the ballot April 6th. And I know some residents...
April 7th.
Oh, April 7th, okay, April 6th. I know some residents, whether it passes or not pass, they're going to bring it up during the town meeting. You know what I mean? During the town meeting in May. So, why don't we listen to the presentation? I believe drainage will come up and we'll see if we'll have dialogue at that point. But I think the bottom line is your point is noted. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, I'm going to continue with residents at this time or any additional residents before we get going... Before we jump into the scheduled items? Seeing none. I'm going to do a quick time check. So, it's 7:00. So, it's perfect timing. So, why don't we jump in? Let's jump into the 7:00 scheduled item for liquor license transfer. Life's Too Short Incorporated, DBA Circle K Mobile. And just to let you know, just to let the audience know, we're taping. It's not live tonight, but we kind of have to speak up a little bit loud because we're transitioning all of our cable gear. So, with that being said, just name... Names for the record, please, and then state your business.
I'm attorney John Ball from the Kelsey and Associates, and I'm representing Cheryl Sutherland, who is the president.
Owner of Circle K Mobile, Life's Too Short.
Counselor, just the middle mic is...
Yeah, just a...
The other two are dead.
The other one's a fake.
Sorry.
Just state your business. Wow, what's the transfer all about? I just want to get background. I can tell you, this one's a little bit unique. I know we're going to treat them very separately, but we have two transfers tonight. I'm going to say there's certain names that are the same on each. So, I'm not saying they're... We're going to take them one at a time, but just state your name, the business, and what you're trying to accomplish tonight in front of the board.
Okay, so, Life's Too Short Inc. runs the Circle K Tucksbury Mobile at 1785 Andover Street. And we're looking to transfer the wine and beer, wine and malt beverages license from Jas Krishna Corporation, who currently runs the business known as Hobart's Country Store at 2514 Main Street. We're going to appoint Cheryl as the manager. We're going to change the location to the Circle K. And Cheryl has, obviously, we have, you know, $125,000 PNS application in here for the licensed asset. Cheryl has a lot of procedures in place to make sure that the town's interests are protected as far as alcohol sales. She has a policy in effect already with the cigarettes where she scans every driver's license for every cigarette sale. So, she'll be scanning every driver's license for alcohol sales. She's locking the cooler. She's covering up any of the advertisements after the hours of service. And most importantly, that she has age and hour restricted cash registers so that transactions will not be able to go through. Everybody has Circle K or shall have Circle K alcohol training in addition to tip certification.
I think the biggest concern maybe for the town when we first started the application was where we're 24/7 location. The blue laws obviously are not 24/7. So, I've done my research with some of my peers, how it gets handled in other towns. And it's my understanding that Tucksbury really doesn't have that scenario. And so, as I said, we would designate probably four cooler doors to bear in mind. They are all set. They have walking mechanisms on them. So, at 11:00 p.m., they would be locked. And any of the warm displays in the center of the store could be covered to ensure, you know, no off-hour sales. My registers are already been programmed to coincide with blue laws. And as I said, we will have the scanners specifically for alcohol sales. We do... We will card everybody. We card everybody currently for tobacco sales and we will do the same for liquor. Anybody that comes in the door, regardless if they look 60 or 50.
Just like Fenway Park. Very good. And I got so excited, it was 7:00. I forgot, you know, I got out of order here. So, do I have a motion to waive the public reading, the public notice reading?
Make that motion.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Very good, thank you. I'm sorry, proceed.
No, that's okay. So, then, and then we'll continue on with tip certification. And also, my franchise also supplies us with training for alcohol and tobacco. So, we'll have all the employees, you know, follow two forms of training. You know, I take this very seriously, any type of licensing. And, you know, I, you know, want to be... Handle it very responsibly, so.
And further, just to point out that the transactions, it's $100,000 loan from Interpris Bank, but there is no pledge on the license. We're not seeking a pledge.
And what does that refer to? I'm sorry.
So, a pledge would be an interest in the lender on the license through the ABCC. We're not seeking any of that.
Okay.
At all.
I give some questions, but at this point, anything else? So, what I'm going to do is we'll let the board speak and then we'll talk, you know, I'll call the butter list. Again, it's not a public hearing, but simply put the butters. So, at this point, questions, comments, concerns from the board? Mr. Brian Dick.
Question and comment. Mr. Chair, knowing the letter from senior town council, it said there was... There was a couple of things that need to be done on the application. And I didn't see in the packet. And I was just wondering if the change of location needs to be checked off in the box. Other needs designation of manager inserted. Do you know if that was... Does anybody know if that was?
I was informed of that. And I did get that...
Is that the tax compliance issue?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
Yeah, so I am the designated manager. You know, I am owner, but I'm not the manager as well.
I know, just a formality on the application.
You resubmitted that page.
This is... No, the only thing I was told was that it was tax compliance. They didn't have the tax compliance bill on it. I went to the tax department this past week. They signed off on it and I brought it to Christine St. Slavon's office.
Yeah, so the application that I had in front of me doesn't have what the senior town council said need to be done. And I was just wondering if that was resubmitted and it just wasn't in our packet.
It's up to the attorney, Tom.
Well, I was informed that it was resubmitted. I have it checked off on my box. And I believe I did speak to the council on that. But we certainly can resubmit that first page.
It's a formality. You're right.
Yeah.
It's a very minor matter.
It's minor? Okay.
Absolutely.
It'll be done. Okay, so I just... I take your letters very seriously. Thank you. And then, just from, I guess, from a town resident's perspective standpoint, to hear you speak up and talk about how sincere and how concerned you are with all of the X's and O's you have in place for checking minors, I was encouraging. So...
Oh, absolutely.
You know, always get that. So, I appreciate your offering up that information. And it sounds like you do have a lot of checks and balances in place. That's it, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Brian Dick. Mr. Rannick.
I just would echo Mr. Dick's comments and also just want to make it clear that this is wine and malt retail only. I just want to be clear for people listening and paying attention. And I also would like to note that all of our building departments, you know, community development, building, border health, which actually noted the food and tobacco as well, the fire department and the police department all checked off that this application was in good standing as well. And I'm very encouraged to hear that you already have a process and that you're going to continue to educate your employees. I'm assuming that you're going to do that prior to any sales.
Yeah, there's a cost involved. So, I wanted to make sure things were going forward. So, once I have the green light, we'll proceed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rannick. Mr. Todd Johnson.
I do have a question. I'm looking at this diagram that you provided us of the floor plan. And I know you gave us a good description of the coolers that you'll use that have lock-off capacity at the appropriate time. But if I'm looking at this correctly, at the back wall, you have this walk-in cooler diagram. Is that entire cooler going to be in that situation where you're selling beer and wine from there? And do you have any other coolers that will be open on off-hours for soda and other cold drinks?
So, right now, that is designated as the walk-in cooler. It's sort of that L shape.
Right.
It's a 12-door cooler.
Okay.
And at the very end, it's the last four doors. So, the first eight doors would be our regular offering of water, soda, et cetera.
Yeah.
And the last four would be the beer.
So, it's limited to a portion of this?
Right.
Okay. Terrific. Thank you.
So, it's basically a third of that space.
That's all I have.
Mr. Mark Crabbett.
Well, I had some other questions to Mr. Johnson just put forward, but I only have one last one thing to go with it. Usually, when you have these type of stores, you have cameras up on the registers and the doors coming in. Are there cameras both facing by this area? And the teens are going to be teens.
Sure. Sure. I'll just tell you a little bit about our camera system. It's... I updated it not quite two years ago. It's 16 different cameras. I do have one located inside the cooler on the back door and all over the cash registers, as well as the interior of the door outside at the pumps. And I have thought about... It has the capacity to add more. And I may add an additional one right... That would focus right on that area.
I think that would be helpful. Just, I mean, I don't know how busy it gets in these stores when people are coming in and out. You have people buying gas, buying coffee, doing everything else that's going on. And you get a couple of teens that go back there maybe with a backpack or something like that. You just want to keep an eye on it. So, we take that very seriously.
That, you know, the... I said it would be the last four doors, but we're kind of toying with it might be the first four doors because it's a little bit more visible to the cash registers.
Yep.
So, we're in kind of in flux there. But we haven't completely decided, but that may be the swing where we would put it. You know, you have to take space requirements into account and so forth, so.
All right, thank you.
Okay, very good. I am going to... I do have some questions, but I'm going to direct my questions to our senior town council, Mr. Charles Roulis. So, this one's a little bit unique for me being on the board here. So, we have two applications back to back. We're going to treat them separately. So, I'm not questioning the applicants, but I do want to just question... I have some questions. So, essentially, we're taking a liquor license, beer and wine from Hobart's, and they're looking to transfer it to their business establishment. And the next business, again, this is for our board, the next order of business would be taking the liquor license under Krishna. It's, I think, the store is called Orbitz, and actually taking their beer, wine, and liquor license and transferring that over to Hobart's. So, essentially, liquor license are moving miles up the street. And is that... Again, a lot of the business transactions that we have done in this town have been simply whether it's the business and/or the liquor and beer license, but it stayed with that entity. It's either stayed with that business or... Is this unique to actually have liquor license literally move miles up the street?
No, I don't think it's unique. In my experience in the past, for example, this town, the hood town, you may have a restaurant, for example, that has a beer and wine license. And it wants a full liquor license. And sometimes, the only way you can acquire it is to purchase it from some other restaurant that has a full liquor license. And they purchase it, comes to their establishment, and they transfer their license up. So, one way that you, a restaurant where there are no further licenses available to upgrade to a higher level is to acquire some other restaurant and then further up. So, that's not unusual. I've seen it happen in regards to restaurants. I don't recall it happening at the package store in Tucksbury, but it has happened in town in Tinsborough, for example, I think. Because their licenses, Tinsborough, excuse my voice, they have a greater restriction towards licenses that are more difficult to obtain in Tinsborough for restaurants because it's close to state line. In Tucksbury, we've had available liquor licenses for restaurants. I believe we still have, I think, one left. But package store licenses in Tucksbury have been restricted. So, it's not that easy to get a package store license.
That's in motion per our last town meeting, correct?
Yes.
I mean, my only fear was, you know, we're the stewards of the licenses. And now, all of a sudden, you know, we're going to have the owners of the business of that particular license just shuffle those licenses around. So, maybe it's something the town to consider. I don't know. You know, but like I said, I thought this was unique, very unique for this town where we're shuffling these licenses out and about. What's going to start the next business or businesses? So, I just food for thought, potential bylaws. And that's what I'm thinking from a town level because I just thought it was unique.
This town, as I understand it, Mr. Chair, all of our, all liquor licenses is not available. You have to acquire from some other licensee if you want to upgrade your particular business to a higher level. Those things can change. You know, the city of Boston, for example, they want to... Because the licenses are so expensive, the ordinary restaurants, small restaurants, can't afford them. So, they want to make it available that anybody that has a restaurant can have a license. But all those people in Boston pay a dear price for their license. Once that happens, they're going to find that the license is no longer available.
Well, they're not cheap at a point of reference for the residents. You know, some of the licenses... You know, some of the licenses in recent history are up to $100,000 for transfer. I think we had one for 150K. And again, it's not, any, no questions directed to the applicants, but just for the town and my edification, that I don't want to get in that game. So, we have to put some, I want to put some thought around it moving forward. So, and again, all the paperwork was aligned, correct?
Yes.
There was a lot of paperwork, so, so why don't at this point, again, I'm only going to open up to the abutters on the particular list. I think there's seven abutters. So, at this time, are there any abutters that would like to speak for the liquor license transfer? Life's Too Short, DBA Circle K Mobile. Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So, move.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
So, again, Mr. Zerulis, what's your recommendation? Again, I want to be kind of careful here and tread lightly because this is, I think, unique, but what's your recommendation to the board?
Regarding whether you should vote yes or no?
Correct.
I'm not sure if that's a legal issue.
All right, then, then I'll strike that from the record. What's the pleasure of the board?
Let me put it this way. The board at this particular point has only to make a determination whether or not the licensee be a suitable person. If you find the person to be suitable, you vote appropriately. If you don't, you vote appropriately.
Okay.
That's a legal standard for the vote.
Okay, very good. Before I open up to the board, are all your employees plus eighteen?
Yes.
Okay, very good. And as the plan would be to get tip certified down the road, you familiar with tip certified?
Yes.
Okay, and you aware that Tewksbury had a very big problem with serving minors in Tewksbury within the last year or so?
In what capacity? In a package?
Simply coddling minors going in there and not being coddled. You mentioned earlier, it was very good, no matter if they're twenty, thirty, sixty, or seventy, caught everyone, just like Fenway Park.
Yeah, we did.
Okay.
And also, mine register system, they, it's $300 per scanner. They have two registers. They have three D scanners that scan every license. So, that's, that's going to be the procedure. You don't have a license. We deal with this all the time with tobacco. We refuse sales often. People don't have the ID. People, I forgot, it's in my car. Okay, sorry, we can't sell.
Very good, very good.
So, that's our position.
Awesome, very, very good. That being said, what is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, having listened to Ms. Sutherland, we've sat through a number of these hearings over the years on different transfers and license issues. I personally find her to be very committed and detailed. She's obviously made an investment and a commitment to all the technology that we're aware of that prevents sale to minors. And she comes across as very credible in her desire to protect young people in the community and also her business from any inappropriate sales. So, based on that, I will offer a motion to, in the vein of Life's Too Short context, I will offer a motion to approve the license application or transfer to Life's Too Short, Inc., doing business as Circle K Mobile.
Very good, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a motion, and I have a second. All's in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations. Remember, I do have to answer tough questions, that's all. So, congratulations, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, a little bit past our next schedule, 7:15. So, this one happens to be the liquor license transfer application. JS Krishna Incorporated, DBA Hobarts Country Store.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to the public notice.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, name and, name and state of business, please.
My name is Attorney John Meridian, Democas Law Offices. With me is Sanjay Patel. He is the President, Director, Treasurer, Secretary, sole shareholder of JS Krishna Corporation, DBA Hobarts Country Store. So, kind of to explain the transaction, it's the second half of the, of the deal. We are seeking approval of the transfer of the liquor license that was owned by Yushi A, DBA Abut Liquors over at 1768 Main Street. We're seeking the transfer of the license over to 2514 Main Street, which is currently Hobarts Country Store. We're seeking approval of the change of location, approval of transfer, approval of Sanjay Patel here as manager of record. Sanjay has owned Hobarts for close to thirteen, fourteen years now. Essentially, what this transfer is, is he's upgrading from beer and wine at that location to, to full liquor. I did a little research, and it kind of looks like Hobarts is down, I guess, on the south side of Main Street. So, the nearest liquor store is almost two miles away, I believe, the full liquor license. So, this, it served the public need on that area of Main Street for a full liquor demand. Like I said, you know, Sanjay would be manager of record, continue to be manager of record. He is tip certified. He's been a good operator in town for close to thirteen, thirteen, fourteen years now. Have about three to four employees. Do you have a scanner over there at the moment? Yeah. They do have a scanning, ID scanner system? With that, I will take any questions the board may have.
Okay. Questions, comments from the board? Ms. Stronach.
Thank you very much for coming in and presenting this tonight. I do have some questions. I'm not sure, Mr. Chairman, if they're going to be to the town manager. First of all, I, similar to the last application, I did see that the building department had a question about the building actually being hit by a truck and not repaired. Are you aware of that?
Yes.
And that there is a apartment on the second floor, are you aware of that?
Yes.
Are you taking steps to address those issues?
Yes.
Do we have, can you shed some light from the building department?
Sure. I mean, the building inspector was just making, making note of those two issues. In regard to the truck hitting, I think backing into the back of the structure, a structural engineer has provided a report that needs to be reviewed, and before any work can take place, they need to pull permits from the building department. There is a apartment on the second floor, I believe, that may be non-conforming, but that hasn't been fully determined, but it could be an issue. But neither one of them have any impact on the license itself. Just transfer.
Okay. And I guess what concerns me about that, while I do agree that it doesn't have any impact on the license, we also have a letter from one of your neighbors, and I did review the abutters list, and the abutters list is mostly companies rather than individuals, but there is one individual that is on that, and it's Mr. Curtis Brown, and I'm not sure if he's with us tonight, but he certainly made his point known that he is concerned that you have not been a good neighbor in terms of having people in your area with speeds creating unsafe conditions and trash around your property. I'm bringing this to you because, again, this isn't subject necessarily to the license, but we do expect yourself to address the issues that are on your property and take care of them. The truck that was hit was back in 2015, so that's been some time that that's been an open issue. So, I am, I don't think that we have the ability to enforce those things, but you did just state to myself that you've been a good-standing representative in the community. And what I'm telling you is, the people that abut your property may not necessarily agree with that statement, and that's concerning to me. So, I want to make sure that you're aware of those things.
No, I am aware of it. We, we had a guy we hired to repair that place, and it was over the winter, and then he couldn't do it, so I ended up finding another guy to do the repair. And I think I couldn't just pull the permit out because the building department found out that I had a apartment upstairs, and he stayed in the apartment zero ago, and it's been, the way I bought the business, it was, apartment was there, and he's been operating as a apartment up there and a store downstairs. I wasn't aware of it. Then, the second person who was supposed to pull the permit, he took some money, and he's gone. And then I ended up hiring a third person to do the repair, and I, same, same issue, I couldn't pull the permit out because the building department's saying the apartment is illegal, just empty the apartment out and go from there on. But I did hire another attorney in town, and he's working on it to make the apartment legal, and that's where he's taking all this time. But I do want to do the repair, and I will do that.
There is a circular motion going on, arguing going on here with the building department in terms of, I guess they won't grant the permit because they feel that the use on the second floor is illegal, but Sanjay said he has hired local counsel to file an opinion with the building department that that uses pending existence prior to the town zoning laws, therefore grandfathered here. I, you know, it's not a board decision tonight, obviously, but I think that's kind of where the sticking point is.
And I hear that, but again, I'm talking about multiple issues here. I'm also have a letter from an abutter talking about persistent problems of empty beer cans, used scratch tickets, and others. And while you have a circular problem with the building department, that circular problem has been going on for three years. So, I just note to you that these are concerns for me, that things don't linger, and I'm sure that there's lots of reasons for that, but from my perspective, I want our residents to be able to be in an area that is clean and neat. So, I'm asking you to take attendance to those right away.
No, no, I will clean it up. I do have a trash can right front of the door when you enter to throw the...
Yeah, I don't think that's enough.
No, no, it's not enough, but I'm sure that I'll go out and take care of anything.
Thank you, I would appreciate that.
Chairman, just make a remark, just for clarity, so everybody wanted to stand. Recently, discussions with the building department with me, we have separated the issue of the apartment due to damage to the, to the facility.
Great.
It has to be some roof work done, and some structural work done on the outside. Building department, to my understanding of the last conversation, is prepared to separate those issues and view because the reconstruction and repairs and roof have nothing to do with the apartment. It's a big separate issue, and there's still a big question mark as to whether or not it's a valid apartment. It could be, yeah. To also hear that's that thick information, it's just, they, they may go down and pull up permit without consideration of the apartment.
Okay.
It's a separate issue.
Thank you very much, Mr. Charles Zerulis. I appreciate that. That's my only concerns with the application as it's presented.
Very good. Mr. Mark Krabman.
Yeah, I'm reading through the same thing, and I had the similar concerns, but the thing that really struck me the most was, he also put that there's never been a life safety inspection on the building or the apartment by himself, or the fire department. So, while the apartment may not be, could be conforming, it may not be, maybe something that had been existing, the fact that there hasn't been a life safety inspection of the building, I don't understand why that hasn't taken place of, you know, that's concern of, because the whole building, if people are going to be going in and out of this facility, is like, I don't understand why this hasn't taken place, why, if they're doing life inspection, I mean, life safety inspections on all the other buildings, why it hasn't taken place at this, all by the fire department. Usually, they go in, inspect those premises.
I have no idea. I mean, I do have a fire panel right front of the door, and everything is hard-wired, far as I know. I mean, the panel is there, everything's hard-wired. When there's some construction to put a keynote room, I'm pretty sure fire department came out to inspect it. Building department, they came out to inspect it. I mean, the health department has been inspecting everything every year. I mean, I don't know what else, other inspection I need to do to get it to the point I'm...
Who runs the life inspection? I think it's the building department, but, I mean, see, I see we have sign-off on it, but yet there's a note on here that says, there's never been a life safety inspection on the building or apartment by myself or the fire department, but yet we have a sign-off by the fire department and the, and the building, that's signing off on it, so, which is a concern of...
I think, I think the building inspector's comment refers to the apartment itself not having a life safety inspection. I'm not sure he means the...
According to this note, he wrote a building or apartment. He put both.
Yeah. Again, it's inspected every year for its beer and wine license, so I'm not sure exactly what the building inspector's referring to. I do believe it's the, the apartment, but we can check on that.
Okay. Thank you. Very good. Mr. Brian Dick.
Quick comment. So, today's business about transferring the license, you know, it sounds like the owner's moving forward to repair the building in his way, and I think it's duly noted with the board, as well as the apartment, it's two separate issues. So, tonight, we're talking about a business transfer action. You know, as, as the senior council has said, the application is in order, and I don't see any more significant comments on that for myself. I do see that the liquor license that we signed off on early this year is in his folder, so we did approve that license that he currently owns. My signature's right on there, as well as all of us. So, from a business standpoint on what we're talking about tonight, I personally want to get into the apartment piece, because that sounds like it's being dealt with in a different way, lawyer, whatever, that's, that's how we do things. And the, the damage from the business, you explained you've had a couple of tough calls. You went with a contractor, he took some money from you. From a business standpoint, I understand that, that's a tough thing. So, as long as it's good discussion, duly noted, I think you understand where we're coming from, but from an application standpoint and what we're going to do tonight, I'm fine with this, this process. That's all I can say, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Mr. Todd Johnson?
I have no comments at this time.
Okay, very good. Ms. Stronach.
I do have one more thing that I would like to say. I agree with Mr. Dick about the application being in front of us. I bring up the note about the neighbor and more about the thing, given Mr. Zerulis's comments earlier about what we have in front of us is to decide whether the applicant is appropriate and will be taking appropriate actions. So, this particular piece, I believe, is for a full liquor license, correct? So, the onus and the responsibility is even, in my mind, greater than just beer and wine. And I am entrusting, and I'm trying to state, that these things that seem minor are big things. And big things, when big things aren't taken care of, little things aren't taken care of. And I just think that as somebody running a business in town, all of those things need to be addressed. So, I agree with the license being in play, and I bring those things up to you because they're just as important, and we're entrusting you with a much greater responsibility in terms of a full liquor license. So, that's my concern, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, very good. I just have a couple. Are you going to expand the footprint of the business to carry liquor, I suppose?
No, it's staying the same.
Okay, so it's all going to fit?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. And regarding the residents' complaint, I drove by there today, and now that the snow melted, it is a mess, and I would say a lot of our property, Seven Eleven is right up the street, it's kind of a mess as well that the snow melted. I mean, you get thousands of scratch tickets, it's a mess. So, on a, on a different level, we might have to put just a note out, you know, to the businesses to kind of do, let's call it a spring cleanup. Earth Day for Tewksbury can't come soon enough because it is, it is a mess right now. So, I think that's a no-brainer, that's easy to clean up and be, be responsible. So, with that said, at this time, I'm just going to open it up to the abutters. Are there any abutters felt like to speak at this time? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
What is the pleasure of the board? What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Jay, I'd like to make a motion for the liquor transfer application for J E, J S, Christian Corp, DBA, O'Barks Country School.
I have a motion, I have a second.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion, a second. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Thank you, congratulations. Thank you, guys. Okay, at this time, we have one, we, just for the residents of the audience, we covered a lot of ground already. We have, the final thing on our scheduled items is the presentation of the elementary school building project. I'd like to take a five-minute recess, so let's regroup at seven forty.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah. All right, this is our last order of business, so this is the presentation of the elementary school building project. Now, here's the deal. We already had the residence section, however, I always believe that if a resident comes in front of, um, comes here to speak, that's my style as the chairman of the board, is let that resident speak. So the order of operation would be, let's run through the presentation of the elementary, uh, elementary school project. At that point, we'll open it up to the board for questions. And then last but not least, like I said, if a resident comes there, I always allow them to speak and we'll hold to the five minutes. Now, for the residents' sake, we might not solve anything, but I always think it's important to have the conversation. It's a democracy to listen and get it on the record. And again, the form to really bring it to the attention and to the, um, to the town is after the vote, we have this thing called town meeting, where you grab the microphone and state your business. So again, I don't, we might not solve anything, but I think it's very important to hear the residents, um, speak. We'll put them on the record. And again, we'll keep it to five minutes. Um, and you may, or may they want, want to address that's, and your power and the board's power is to listen to the residents and, um, take, accept those comments. And you may want to reply, um, or you may not want to reply. So that's how we're gonna move forward. Sound like a plan?
Very good.
Very goo-, oh, Ms. Tronick?
Um, thank you for putting this on the agenda. And I do wanna recognize the, um, we invited all the boards here tonight, so I didn't know if you wanted to speak.
Go ahead, you got to go.
Okay, so we invited all the boards tonight to this hearing, so, um, to your presentation. It's not a hearing, I'm sorry. And I just wanna make sure that people are aware that we have, I believe it's the entire school committee here. Um, the planning board is here, finance committee members are here, and conservation committee members are here. So I just want people that are watching at home to be aware of that those people are in attendance tonight. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Tronick. You beat me to the punch, very good. So with that being said, and just name for the record, and then we'll jump into the presentation.
Dennis Francis, uh, school committee, and also chairman of the building committee.
Christopher Malone, superintendent of schools.
Peter Collins, uh, C B R E hearing owners project community.
Ken Kovacs, plans for architects, principal in charge.
Very good.
Thanks again, uh, Mr. Chairman, we appreciate tonight. As, uh, Mr. Tronick mentioned, we thought it was a good time to just give an update on where we are as we approach the vote in April. Um, this has been a, talk about a sprint and a marathon. This has been a marathon and a sprint at the same time in terms of getting everything done from where we started and where, where we're going. Um, we tried to, um, this building committee right from the get-go to have as much community outreach as humanly possible. We've had over twenty community meetings, we've had over thirty building committee meetings. So, so I think that we're trying to get the word out, uh, to the public. This is obviously a very important project, uh, for the, for the school district, and more importantly, for the town as a community. This will be the second largest project this town has ever undertaken. And we feel it's our responsibility to give out as much information as we can. Um, we have one last, um, community outreach meeting scheduled at the high school next Monday night. Um, and if the vote goes favorable, we will continue to have community meetings the whole month of April until the, uh, town meeting vote. So with that being said, I'll turn it first over to Superintendent Mr. Malone.
Thank you, Mr. Francis, and thank you to board members. Certainly we have students and families in Tewksbury, thank you. Uh, as we look at the educational status of the district, some of our strongest concerns lie in the conditions of our elementary school buildings. The North Street Elementary School built in nineteen fifty-two, the Trahan School built in nineteen fifty-four, the Heathbrook School in nineteen fifty-six, and the Doing School in nineteen sixty-eight. All of these schools have many characteristics in common. They don't have ample parking or drop-off safe, drop-off areas for students. None of them are ADA compliant or up to code at this time. All of them have roofs that leak and are beyond their warranty lifespan. In addition to that, the campus systems, particularly with the heating and ventilation systems, are out of date and need upgrading. The electrical systems cannot support the needs of students in the twenty-first century. These are just minor aspects as to part of the conditions that exist right now today in our four elementary schools. By allowing this project to move forward, we hope the town can change that experience for all students in this district for many years to come. Part of this project would house seven hundred and eighty students in a building that will hold all students in grades two, three, and four. The benefits of bringing students from across the town together earlier, consolidate all academic and the structural supports for their improvement is essential for our district. The ability to have our professionals, our teachers and other educators work collaboratively on a campus atmosphere now encompassing grades two through six, we hope will also benefit our students for many years to come. This would also allow us to have something we don't have right now, which is dedicated space for our special education students for some of their specialized instruction and individual needs and some of their physical needs. Opportunities for our students to experience art, music, and STEM in a clearly appropriate way. It would allow us to house our students in a safety-based building with security as certainly a high priority. And it would allow our students to utilize the technology we've made available to them and compete in the market where the jobs demand our students have twenty-first century skills. Currently, we're not able to bring those skills to our students due to the lack of facilities. At this point, I would like to turn it over to Mr. Ken Kovacs or Mr. Peter Collins.
Thank you, Superintendent. Um, just stepping back a bit to how we got here, this is through the Massachusetts School Building Authority, they have a rigorous process. And the first part of that is to evaluate the existing conditions of your schools. And when we were hired, architects, mechanical engineers, fire protection specialists, uh, electrical specialists, we all went into the Trahan, as well as the North, the Doing, and the Heathbrook. Because we wanted to understand what the existing conditions were for all your schools within the district. What we were required to do by the Massachusetts School Building Authority is to evaluate what it would take for the Trahan to be brought up to code. And we did that. And that cost just to bring it up to code and not even reflect twenty-first century learning standards would be in the range of twenty-two million dollars. We understand that the North Street is kind of the equivalent sister school. So we did not do a cost estimate for that, estimate for that, but we did the existing conditions. So it's safe to say that's still be in the range of twenty to twenty-two million dollars to replace the North Street. Again, not bringing it up to MSBA standards. They actually wouldn't support that option because you need to meet the goals of Tewksbury. And the teachers, the leadership team took three months in evaluating what they needed for spaces in our educational program. And to meet that is the new plan that we see today. And the MSBA understood that the Trahan or the North couldn't meet that. And so that option wouldn't be supported by the state. But what's supported by the state was the new seven hundred and ninety school, uh, student school for great student reform. And with that, I'm just gonna go back and let, um, Peter Collins from C B R hearing, let us know what the MSBA has all about.
Sure, thank you, Ken. So, um, thank you, meeting members as well. The MSBA is the Massachusetts School Building Authority, it's a state agency that we all pay our tax dollars into. They provide grant funding to cities and towns throughout the Commonwealth. They have a very prescriptive and very rigorous program in how they, um, provide grant funding monies back to cities and towns. The town of Tewksbury has previously applied for an application to receive grant funding. I believe, Mr. Dennis, two or three times they failed in that.
Three times.
Three times. This program, since they've been, um, accepted into, uh, the current stage, has been about four or five years. We've been involved with the project almost twenty months now, since the application process. The state is, has accepted the project. We've gone through multiple meetings with the MSBA. We had a very, um, high-level meeting with the board of directors on February thirteenth of this year, where the board of directors approved the project scope, the project budget, and the project schedule. As shown on the, the map there, or excuse me, the slide, the town of Tewksbury is receiving a fifty-eight point seven-seven percent of eligible monies back towards the cost of the project. That's a pretty good number, and from a lot of, lot of angles. Many communities would, would, uh, would love to be in the position Tewksbury is currently in to be in the application program, to have received MSBA funding, and to receive the percentage of reimbursement that Tewksbury is scheduled to receive should the project move forward. Here's another slide of, of the members of the building committee. Many of those names, you have, they're all volunteers here in the community, all living here. Many of them, um, have past experience on other projects in the town. They are very well experienced at it. Many, many of the members are also members of town government, as you can see on the names there. Uh, they ask very tough questions and they're very prudent in making sure the project scope and the budget, um, meets the, the mission of the, the building community.
And what I'm gonna do is just kinda walk us, uh, back to where we were when we started the process. And that was evaluating sites, that was a major component of this. And so the first phase of this was to look at school-owned properties, town-owned properties across. And as you can see on that upper slide, um, it's a little off the screen, but, uh, the Heathbrook, Chandler Wellfield, Eastman Road, Ryan in the North, and the Trahan were all studied. These were school and town-owned facilities, uh, to meet various grade configurations. And they all had challenges, the Trahan was, um, uh, very small, surrounded by a neighborhood, existing school on the site, uh, the Heathbrook as well, Eastman Road, had a nice wooded area, but to get there would be highly disruptive going through a residential street that would need to be ripped up to accommodate the school, that would be considered. And it did not have the second means to heat rest out of that site. Chandler Wellfield had a lot of, lot of area, but, um, very wet and very remote in some port areas. Heathbrook, um, uh, North Street was, again, has an existing school, ongoing activities in a small parcel. And, uh, before the O P M and Archdeck were hired, the state-owned property, uh, at the hospital was, uh, evaluated. And I think that was, uh, kind of, um, taken off the table when we joined. But there's a lot of activity trying to evaluate various sites that could accommodate the new school. And from that, the Ryan School became the focus, uh, due to its geographical location, centrally located in the town. And it could work in conjunction with the Ryan School of grade five, six for a new, uh, school campus. And again, it's near the police station, fire, town hall, and other amenities. It also was large enough to accommodate the seven hundred and ninety school, uh, student school, play areas, parking, roadways, and the athletic field. And a little bit of this is cut off from the top, but this is the final plan. Uh, number eight, just for kind of reference, Pleasant Street is on the right side of the slide. Uh, the center school, um, will be removed as part of this project. And that will allow visibility into the site to see the front of both schools and to provide proper circulation for buses, cars, and pedestrians. Number eight is the Ryan School that remains intact to the duration of the project. There's a one-way vehicular loop road around the new campus. This has been evaluated and worked in conjunction with the police and fire department here, as well as our security consultant and our traffic engineer and our landscape architect. So a lot of people have put some thought into this plan. And a one-way, twenty-four-foot-wide loop road around the campus is the safest, um, configuration for this. And a real asset which makes this a campus is, it takes the road, the cars, out of the equation for the kids on the main campus. So between the two buildings, it's plaza, landscape, play areas, and the field. And we keep the roads to the perimeter. We have ample parking, distributed, um, not one, uh, kind of, uh, massive lot, but smaller lots on the north, southeast, and west. And we've, uh, this is the new school located here on the east, the area of the Dusette Field. That was the best location determined for the new school, you know, away from the western edge. And the new Dusette Field is relocated along here with bleachers, concession, and fieldhouse, as well as, uh, natural grass practice field and some supplemental parking. So this is a summary of where we are with the project right now. We will wait for the vote. And when that comes, the design hasn't stopped, this isn't the final design, but we will work with the town, the planning board, conservation commission, and the community to progress this even further. So some questions that have come in, in the past at many of the meetings, is stormwater. And this is a good slide because it represents what you currently have. So the Ryan School site with the Dusette Field and the practice field that's currently here, this is to propose on the new plan. You have one detention basin. Uh, now, what is stormwater management? If there's a storm, you need to manage the water from the roadways and the building. You have one detention basin. That does not cut it for this site. You are well under standards for controlling stormwater on this campus. What the new plan does, these hatched-in boxes are self-surface stormwater systems. It collects the water from the Ryan School, from the roadways, the parking lots, the sidewalks, and the new building. When it storms or the snow melts, it goes into this system. It is held and it's released at a very, very slow rate back into the ground. That's so you don't overload the surroundings. This campus has none of that right now, except for that one detention basin. So what this project will mean is it will improve the stormwater management on the campus, which I think is gonna be a great asset to, uh, uh, the surroundings. So I just wanted to point that out, that's been expressed at many of the meetings leading up to this, but I think it's, um, it's good to kind of, uh, bring up again because, uh, I think it's an important one, especially being in Tewksbury where we have to evaluate those many sites, you can see, there's a lot of weapons and throughout the town. And, um, this is really how you manage that water. And here's a final look at the completed plan and artist's rendering. You can see the roadways around the surrounding, the new field, the new school. We look at this in between space as an area of gardens, plazas, learning areas. We have a play area in the back, and then the football field or the all-purpose field with the bleachers. And working with the neighbors, what we're gonna do now is, there's a comment about the fieldhouse structure being three stories near the neighbor's property. So we evaluated this plan, we're going to relocate that to the southern portion of the field and take that away from, uh, the northern edge. So we're gonna have one concession with toilet facility and a new fieldhouse over here. And that'll be two stories. And so this will go away, uh, we just haven't updated this waterfall rendering. So again, we're, we're hearing comments from the neighbors and we're trying to address them. Just a quick look at the floor plan. Uh, we have second grade on the first floor, third grade on the second floor, and fourth grade on the third floor. The community spaces would be the cafeteria that has a performance art aspect with a stage, as well as a large gymnasium that's up above, so those are great community asset. And again, we have all the learning that reflects twenty-first century learning, meets the educational plan of Tewksbury, and is satisfied Massachusetts School Building Authority for its educational value. And here's the front approach of the main entrance of the school and the drop-off. And Peter, if you wanna give a quick overview of that.
Sure, so, uh, here's some, some of the scheduled dates, milestone activities that we've been tracking throughout the course of the last eighteen to twenty-two months. Currently, we, um, we are right here on the April sixth timeline, there's a vote coming up next week, then followed by town meeting, uh, on May sixth for the appropriation of the project funding. Should the project move forward, we'll get right into the next level of design called design development. That'll last, uh, until about September or October. Then we move into what we call the final design phase, contract documents. There's a sixty percent, ninety percent, and a hundred percent milestone timelines in there. That will take us into, um, February of twenty twenty. We then turn around and do some bidding and awarding of contractors, looking to get some construction activities underway next spring. So I'll call it, um, thirteen months from now, give or take, May or June of twenty twenty. We have a twenty-four-month construction phase, uh, duration of time here. Looking to... We have a twenty-four-month construction phase duration of time here, looking to finalize the new building in June of 2022, have the building fitted out with furniture equipment, punch list activities, and ready for the start of school in the late August, early September of 2022. Turn around by six to nine, ten months thereafter of closeout, some other demolition activities of the former center school, and punch list activities, any final site work, and wrap it all up in 2023.
I just want to make a couple more comments before we open it up. A couple other interesting things, prior to the MSBA doing their vote to move the project forward, they also have a workshop just to go over some things. Some of the extra reimbursement points that we're getting, we're getting two extra points for basically making the building a green building, well, that's going away, we're grandfathered in. We're getting additional points for doing the building project with the contractor at risk, that's going away. So there's already three reimbursement points actually that we're getting that in future projects are going away. If you look at the MSBA, look at what's going on with the MSBA, project costs are going up, which means they're doing less projects. You look at, you know, when we did the Ryan School, I think our reimbursement rate was up over seventy-four percent. The model school program, which we benefit with, the high school where we got an additional five extra points for that, that's going away. So the costs, if anything, could go up, they're not going down. And one of the things that keeps me up at night amongst other things is I look at what happens if this project is not successful. Well, everything that we've talked about tonight, and everybody at this table's talked about tonight, we're still gonna have to do it. We're gonna have to bring the Trahan up to code at least, we're gonna have to bring the Nod Street up to code at least, we're gonna have to do something with Duce Set Field, we're gonna have to do something with the center school. And if we, if we go that track and that way, none of that is reimbursable by the state, not to mention the fact with escalation costs, the prices go up, multiple overrides, multiple votes. So that, that concerns me. I think this is a great opportunity for, for Tewksbury, and it's a great opportunity for the students in this town, and also for our student athletes in this town, is to give everything possible the best that we can do, and I'm quite confident in this town, we voted a lot of building projects in tough times in this town. So I am quite, quite confident that this project will move forward and we'll continue to do whatever we can to make sure everything is right, and with that, we'll say some questions.
All right, perfect. At this time, I'd like to open up to the board, like I said, that will leave the residents, so at this time, questions from the board. Mr. Strong.
Thank you very much for putting this presentation on, I've seen it numerous times, this is the latest one, so it's wonderful, I haven't got that. I couldn't agree more. And now's the time to get this done, costs are going up. I saw, I just was looking it up now, you know, all the high schools, three-hundred-and-forty-three million dollars. So it's like, you know, the costs aren't going away. I know people are worried about the taxes and what's going on, but it's something that we have to take care of now. It's a project that's been well overdue, I mean, all our schools, we're talking about the sixties. I mean, I was going to school in the sixties, so I mean, it's just the fact that my kids went through all these schools, I remember how bad they were at that time, and now they're graduating, they're getting out of high school. It's been well overdue to get these things done, so thank you very much for this presentation, fully support you.
Thank you. Mr. Strong.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As a member of this elementary building committee, I just want to say that I think a lot of thought has gone into this project. I know that they have spent a tremendous amount of time meeting to work with the residents, as well as the educational leaders, and the teachers, and the parents, and the PACs to get their input into this project. We are at a milestone in this project that's gonna take us into the next phase, and I believe that the people that are working on this have the agenda of what is best for the town, and more importantly, the educational systems that we need to provide for our students moving forward. Everyone that I know thinks about school buildings in a way that is an environment, what's gonna get you the best education? No, it's not. It's teachers, it's parents, it's the support staff. But at the end of the day, you can't learn when there is wind blowing through and rain pouring into a classroom, and our students deserve to be housed in appropriate educational space, and that is why I support this project. I am going to ask for a motion, Mr. Chairman, after I've listened to my colleagues, asking the board to support this as a whole, but I will hold off on that. And I just want to thank all of the residents who have come to our meetings and have made this a better project. We are listening to your concerns. I happen to be in a butter of this project, and I am too concerned about drainage, and I think that we are going to make sure that this project is done right. Thank you.
Very good. Mr. Ryan Dick.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I guess just a couple of quick questions, clarifications, so I wanted to. So when you talked about the drainage, right, so right now, we have one area currently as is at the Ryan School, very inefficient system, would you say, and we're going from that to ten larger basins that should make it a little bit more efficient for stormwater drainage?
Yeah, what I mean, yeah, what you have right now is completely inefficient for, I'll say, the building and the roadways at the Ryan.
With what's there right now?
With what's currently there right now. And what's going to be added is, I'd say, a very engineered stormwater system. So this isn't just throwing in some tanks and letting the water circulate, it's done at a calculated, high-level engineering standard that's required by the state as well as the local officials.
Why didn't we do, and I know you can't really explain this, but maybe shed some light, why wasn't that engineering done way back when, different rules, regulations, or was it a cost savings, or what do you think?
I mean, I can't speak on it too much, but yes, regulations do change, the volume that's required right now for this project, as you can see, just from that graphic representation, takes care of different parts of the roadways, takes care of different sections of the buildings, and so that's how it's calculated, you know, every roof, every surface is what we need to collect.
So that's, it's an impressive graphic when you see what we have today, and then what we could potentially get depending on the vote. Regarding wetlands, is there anything that you can add to affecting wetlands in this project? Now, I know there's different areas and we're bringing things in, can you just kind of briefly explain?
Yes, and we have some graphics that are kind of behind at the tail end, but these have all been shown before.
Does anything affect, anything we're doing affecting the wetlands when it comes to putting things in the wetlands or on the wetlands or?
The, the school building, the field is not within the wetlands. We've had one survey conducted already, that's what's called a preliminary survey, we're gonna have a second survey done once the project goes forward, and that's gonna solidify where the wetlands are delineated, or it's called an AMRAD, so that's gonna delineate the wetlands where it moved to town. So currently, right now, any project can replicate five thousand square feet under local jurisdiction. So you can be within.
Excuse me, can you turn the light just a little bit so we can point out? Thank you.
So right now, the section that's within the wetlands is this little part juts in, and not the, the building's over here, the building is completely outside of the wetlands, the field is completely outside of the wetlands. And so this little hatched-in area here, and this hatched-in area here is right now what's surveyed as the wetlands. Under local jurisdiction, we can replicate up to five thousand square feet of that. We're actually staying under that, it's about twenty-seven hundred square feet, and so that would get replicated here, okay? That's where that twenty-eight, twenty-seven thousand square feet would go. So this hatched-in area here would get replicated here, and so that's under local jurisdiction. Anything above that, you get involved with the Army of Foreengineering, but we're just talking this roadway.
Okay.
And that's completely common on large-scale school projects and working with the town, we've met with departments before, again, until we have that survey, then we solidify exactly where that line is, but it's just within a small margin right now.
So when is, and you can turn the lights back up, 'cause I want everybody to see, the look in the face I have. Okay, all right. So the wetlands are gonna be replaced with, thank you for explaining that. And then, when you say the second survey, surveying, now, what does that consist of? Does that consist of going, making sure the soil's legit and tested and all that stuff, or that already been done?
So we said, yeah, that's, that's totally separate. There have been borings already conducted, and report from the borings are mainly because we're trying to capture cost, is that there's good soil and the building can be placed on standard spread footings. There's nothing exotic like pylons going on, nothing like that. It's standard conventional structure, on-spread footings with the existing soils.
Okay, so if there's, if there's any ponds, or if there's anything outside of, where were we just pointing to, is that also being accounted for and noted, that type of thing? So a butter came up and talked about a pond.
Yep, right.
So will that second survey take into account that pond?
Right. So we're gonna have, on one track, we're gonna have more borings done, okay, understand the soils. On the second track is, the surveyor's gonna go back, and they're gonna have a botanist as part of their team, they're gonna flag the wetlands, they're also gonna understand a better idea of the topography, the elevation difference across the site, and they will solidify where all natural currents are happening. Right now, it's a combination of what they have captured, because they already have gone with wetland scientists, and they're using SUSE GIS, which is a standard for this level. And so, yes, there's areas where we have a concentration of water, this is what we're locating as Fillsberry Pond, so we have all this accounted for at this level.
I appreciate that. And then, Mr. Superintendent, I just had a quick, kind of a quick question, 'cause I've had, I've been at a lot of these meetings, and Mrs. Demos really, the last meeting at the library explained about first and second graders, working with third and fourth graders, and the advantage of that, advantages of that, that campus-like, I know you grazed on that, but when it comes to that, and then maybe having special ed services a hundred feet away versus across town, just?
Sure, I think one of the primary helpers in this campus field is it does bring students from across the town together earlier. Right now, we're divided in the four elementary schools, and even to this day, we're having difficulty balancing neighborhoods and redistricting and doing all those sort of things. But the ability for students to interact, integrate level is gonna be essential to their development, but even at a higher level is our educators, their ability to now consolidate some of their supports. We have math coaches throughout the district, technology integration specialists, we get down to medical, nursing, all these pieces now consolidated, provide a better service for students and better supports to teachers. To have the ability with the campus field to have educators from grade two all the way to grade six to implement reading programs that cover all those, those grade levels, and to be able to have meetings during the day and not rely on two full-day professional development days during the year, but to actually promote the ability of all of our staff members to come together during the workday to support students is outstanding. The location, the design of special education spaces, occupational therapy spaces, of any type of physical-type activity is essential. Every element in all of our K4 schools is retrofitted. We have taken aspects and fit them into boxes. These are now specially-designed spaces. Some of them may have better access to toilet facilities, others may have better access to evacuation routes, medical suites, other pieces like that. But it comes from the architectural design, it actually allows the support of special education students to be integrated right into the grade-level setting, not put off in a separate location. And that's essential, and it's also required by law, to have specially-designed spaces for music, for art, which we currently do not have, to allow students to explore that, to allow students to utilize the technology we hardly have available to them effortlessly. Our connectivity in this district, we're trying to provide 21st century connectivity into nineteen-fifties-type buildings. We've had to retrofit multiple elements of these schools just for our students to have access to the internet, and we still have issues with that. Even though we've upgraded and have fiber coming into the buildings, we still have problems in the, in the buildings themselves. So to create these opportunities now where students can come together, staff can come together to better support the instructional component, should raise the level of instruction within the district. It should allow us to also look at consolidating a lot of these efforts. We have teachers that travel between these four elementary schools. The ability to eliminate that piece where teachers actually have a home base and are not traveling between provides a better aspect of instruction for all students, but it also provides a better working environment for all of our staff.
So I just wanted to give you a little bit more time to explain that, 'cause I think that's a very passionate argument for this new school, 'cause when you talk about what our district has always, you know, what we're being measured on is student achievement and test scores, and, you know, this points in that direction of increasing that, I think, with shared resources. And when you talk about 21st century, you talk about student achievement, you talk about mentoring, right? Third and fourth graders mentoring, second and first graders, I think that's such a great thing, makes the hair stand up. Not on my head, on the back of my head. So just to finish up, Mr. Chairman, I know this is a big, big thing, and I just want to take a little bit of extra time, but my last point is really on the field. So when you talk about this field, it's a hundred-year tradition, what we have there now. It's in a point where it's in a dilapidated state and, and a hazard based on, I think, the deteriorating bleachers. If you've ever been to a game there, it only houses football, and that's something that this proposal, this field proposal, will allow all sports to play there, girls and boys, as well as use the fieldhouse, which is not being done now. I think that's a great step in the right direction. If you've ever seen a game there, you're talking about handicap accessibility, I've seen a gentleman fall from the top row to the bottom row on cement, an older gentleman, because there was no handrails going down the stairs, the home bleachers. You talk about bathrooms, and I've had my mother there and my grandmother there, and it's very unpleasant, to say the least. So you're talking about a hundred-year tradition, this project, as Mr. Francis spoke on, fixes multiple town issues in a very fiscal, sound policy to do so. We talk about getting two schools, the parking issues, the center school upgrade, traffic flow, field being condemned, better drainage, there's a whole lot of things in the pot of, this makes a whole lot of sense for Tewksbury, I mean, I am in favor of it, as you can probably see. I just believe that, you know, when you talk about learning time, you can utilize that field in learning time. And this field is for our residents, a hundred percent our residents, our seniors, our kids. It's not about bringing in Melrose, Wakefield to play games, it's about our residents, ninety-nine percent of that used for our residents, and that is a school committee policy that will be dealt with on usage of that field. So I'll finish up with that, I appreciate everybody listening, and that's all I have, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Very good. Mr. Tom Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I fully intend to second or endorse Mrs. Stronick's motion, 'cause I do believe this is a necessity, and it, it's time that we step to the plate. But before I explain a little bit more as to why I, I support it in that way, I think it's important in the interest of full transparency, because as we've all traveled around town and, and had conversation with fellow residents, there have been a number of questions, and one of the things that really hasn't been touched on in the room this evening is the context of the finances, and how that affects. context of the finances and how that affects every individual taxpayer in our town. So I'd like to make sure that that gets on the table. I don't feel we as a board would be doing our job if we gloss over that. And I know this is not being broadcast live, but it will be taped and sent out tomorrow if I have my facts right. So others will be able to view this as we get closer to the election. So I don't know if that's something that you gentlemen can speak to or perhaps the town manager, but the tax impact, the total cost, what portion is being reimbursed from MSBA, what investment we're making over and above that to address things like the field, the drainage that was mentioned, which comes at a high price tag and is an investment in our neighborhood and in our community. All of those components, I think, need to be laid out very specifically so that residents can be fully educated and that information is as transparent as possible. So I don't know if Mr. Francis or Mr. Montori can speak to some of that.
So basically, if you're looking at the total project cost, as you're looking at about $98 million in terms of the total project cost, in terms of what's, as Peter mentioned earlier, in terms of what's being reversed, that 58.77% reimbursement rate, that's of what is being reimbursed. So if you take a look at that, Mr. Johnson, it's basically what the state is giving us is up to a maximum of $32,736,000. So the town is really in to, for about $65 million, give or take. So when you're looking at $65 million and you're looking at it on a basis of a 20 year, 20 year loan with an interest rate of 4.25%, so for the average household value of $404,000, the average taxpayer will be paying about $445 a month. One of the other things, are you here? I'm sorry, are you here?
Thank you.
One of the other, wow. One of the other interesting things is we're looking at, if you look at what the state has given us to the total cost, that's almost roughly about 30% of the total cost of the project. And the day that we were in at the MSBA, there were a couple other elementary school building projects that were passed that day, and the total cost of the project that those particular communities got was 20%, 22%. So we did very well with the state. And also is when we're looking at that numbers, we're also, when we look at that number, they were looking at, you know, that's really the maximum number that you're going to see is, and we cannot exceed that, 98.5 million dollars, that's the number we're locked into with the MSBA, so nothing can exceed that. And to your point is we've, I know early on, a lot of residents wanted to know why we didn't get that information out earlier, but until the MSBA gave the final approval of the project and until Mr. Montori could talk with the assessors and everything, that's why as soon as we got that information, we got the information out as best we could.
Okay, thank you. Can you speak to the components of the field specifically, the administrative offices and the drainage?
I can, I can speak to the, you can probably speak to the, I can speak to the field. So if you're looking at the athletic complex itself, which encompasses the synthetic turf, the concession stand, the field house, the 1,000 bleachers on one side, the 500 on the other, the lighting package, the sound system, concession stand, storage set, storage shed, it's about $7.6 million. And if you're looking at that practice area that we put in, and I'd like to give a little history of that practice area, early on when we were doing our community meetings, that's where the girls softball used to be, so there was a lot of concern by parents and residents in terms of is there any way we can replicate that on the property? And that's how really the focus of that came. So if you're looking at that practice area, the southwest corner, the grass field and retaining wall, the parking lights and the culvert is about $857,000. So if you're looking at both fields all in combined, it's about $8,517,000. And I believe, I believe that's roughly of the $450 a month, a year, a year, $450 a year, that's about $57 of that number for those two, for those two projects.
The part B of my question was the drainage and the central office would be a part C.
Sure, sure. So with respect to, as we all know, this is shown on the screen here, the overall project budget, the total project budget is $98,503,724. Of that 98.5 million, the construction component, strictly construction, all in with respect to trade costs, contingencies, all things related to the contractor is $77,458,06. The balance of the monies is other services that will be provided to the project, things such as what we call other associated costs, there'll be legal costs, there'll be moving and relocation, professional services, furniture, equipment, technology, insurance, testing, permitting, procurement, utility upgrades, and owners and construction contingencies as well makes up the balance between the 98 and 77.
Got it. Super.
As far as drainage, we're going to have to give you that number because it's embedded within estimates, we're going to have to break that out. But I will say relatively high as far as the engineering goes, and we did put an additional allowance for anything unknown, so.
Suffice it to say, I mean, from the presentations I've witnessed, it's a sizable investment in the property, right?
Absolutely.
And that is part of my point, is that we're investing in the area. It's not just the location, it's the entire surrounding area. And that, that's a community wide investment for a specific location, in my opinion, right? I don't live near that site, I'm not in a butter, but I'll contribute to the cost to make that property a better property for those who live around it and those who utilize specifically the school property. So I think that's a worthwhile investment from my point of view.
And the site work encompasses the whole campus. It's obviously all the buildings, we talked about the field, and also sidewalks, light, site lighting, paving, drainage systems all around the Ryan School as well. So it's about a $16 million, $16.7 million total site work cost estimated, of which the 8.5 million is related to the athletic fields and the other 8 million is the balance of the site book, which is, it's a 25 acre site, campus, there's a lot of activity going on there for not only improvements, but to enhance the site as well.
Okay. So let me go back and maybe Mr. Montori can color in some lines here. I know you mentioned the 4.45 a year expense for the average home, but we've had some numbers that also suggest an average cost over the life of the note and then the contribution of other debt that will be retired over time on other projects on excluded debt that we've previously approved. So I think, again, in the interest of full transparency and clarity, those pieces of information need to be out there too. So can you add to that discussion? We're starting at 4.45 as year one.
Right.
But then there's some other things that transpire.
Yeah, so what's important to note that this is a, this will be a 20 year bond.
Right.
It'll be a declining debt, which is a conventional bond for municipalities. We're basing it on a project cost of $98.5 million. We'd be borrowing $65,767,105. Over 20 years, the average tax bill would be $349.08. But what's important to note, that's based on borrowing the summer money I just mentioned, an interest rate of 4.25%. That's based on the current average home value of $404,963 and a shift of 1.55. That's, all of that staying the same for 20 years, which things will most likely change, but that just gives you an indication.
Snapshot in time.
So if you take that same 20 years and look at what debt is falling off the books, because we do have excluded debt falling off the books, we have an average, we have over that 20 years, an average of $33.61 coming off the books, which will net out that $349. Any questions?
Yep.
Is it 30, we have a town, $33 each year?
No, it's an average over 20 years. So for instance, in the first year, 2020, $16.20 drops off on average to the average, to the average home of 404,963. But then in the out years, it goes up to 28, another $28 drops off, we have as high as $125 drop off in a given year. So that's an average over 20 years.
Mr. Stronick?
All right, so.
No, go ahead.
Yeah, so I just, I want to go back and I want to thank you for the additional detail and you as well, Mr. Montori, because I think it's important for all interested parties and hopefully there are many of them to have the full picture. But I started my comments by saying I wanted to go back and explain why I support this particular request. And Mr. Francis initiated the discussion tonight and said this is a big ask. It's the second largest override, or excuse me, debt exemption vote that we've asked our residents to support. But I want to focus the conversation on two areas. First, we've worked hard as a community, and that literally means the entire community. Town management, the leadership, we've had the cooperation of all of the boards in town, particularly the school committee with respect to the education program we have, and most importantly, the residents along the way to vastly improve our financial condition. And the reason in part for doing that is to allow us to invest in our community and continue to do that. If you read the Standard and Poor's and Moody's reports about municipal bond ratings and you read specifically the reports about their evaluation of our community of Tooksbury, when they raised our bond rating to the highest rating we've had, which is effectively our credit rating, it allows us to borrow money at the lowest possible cost. So we have earned the right and ability, in my opinion, to go out and get the most favorable terms that we can at this point in time. That's a benefit, huge benefit to our community. We refinanced debt on the books not long ago and we saved the community because of our improved financial condition about $15 million in interest costs over time, just as an example. So now we're potentially going to borrow more, but we're going to borrow it at more favorable terms. That's a tremendous benefit, but we've earned the right and everyone in this room and all the residents in our community who have supported that effort get the benefit of that investment. One of the things that the bond rating agencies look at is the commitment of our community to invest in itself. That's part of the equation. If we die on the vine and we do not reinvest in our community, then the perspective of the health of our town diminishes in the eyes of those who make those evaluations. This is not a once and done picture. This is a continuum that has to continue over and over and over again. And I believe in my opinion that that's an investment that businesses that want to consider relocating to this region consider the health of our community. This isn't simply, with all due respect, an education issue, it's, it's an investment in our community from an economic development perspective. It's an investment in our community in the context of attracting businesses and to satisfy and ensure that we have a vibrant town for the next generation to invest in and to make a choice to potentially come here. I'm the parent of a recently married daughter who she and her husband made the choice to buy a home in our community. And so as a person who has lived here for nearly 30 years now, I see the future on the horizon, and that's a person in my mind who wants to make that investment. They're just starting out. But that, this is a discussion that will benefit them directly. It doesn't directly benefit me any longer, but it directly affects me and my family in the context of a healthy, vibrant economy in our town, a healthy, vibrant atmosphere in our town, certainly an improved and healthy educational system, all of which hopefully attracts business, which takes and shifts tax burden from the homeowner to potentially the business owner. And one of the components that Mr. Montori just referenced, and I know we sit at this table every November and wrestle with it, is the rate split or the tax shift between the business community and the homeowners. And those are areas that if we have a rising tide lifting all boats, then we're able to share that burden in a way that maybe can contribute to reducing some of that expense on the homeowner. And we want to strive for that. So I think we've put ourselves in a terrific position and it is an opportunity. And I think, Mr. Francis, you underscored the significance of, or the risk of losing the MSBA in the context of, we've had three bites at the apple, we didn't succeed, the program is getting more conservative, we're losing points, we look around and we see communities in the surrounding area that are not getting approved. I know, I saw recently that town of Chelmsford was trying to get funded for their high school for the umpteenth time and they were not approved. So we're in a fortunate position, it is an opportunity. You mentioned, and I completely agree, it's a big ask of our town. So as I've lived in town, we had a big ask 20 something years ago when it came to a new fire station, excuse me, a new police station. And residents stepped up and said, that's the right thing to do. And they voted a debt exclusion, just like we're describing here, and we've paid for that police station. We have a library that has all time high usage. 20 years ago, our town was asked to vote for a new library. We had a library right across this parking lot that was at its end of useful life. And we asked residents to support that, and residents stepped up and they did the right thing, and that was an investment in our community that I think every resident today can be proud of, that we have a vibrant library that is a tremendous contributor to our community. We were asked and we went and asked the community to support an investment in our seniors. We spent some time this afternoon or earlier this evening discussing seniors. We've renovated and expanded the senior center, and that's a huge investment that was made and residents supported that. The south fire station, the Ryan School, the wind school, the high school, all of these were done through debt exemptions and their investments in our community. At every single point when those decisions were brought forward, we could say, stop, we don't support it, we don't want to pay the money, we can't afford it. And all of those things are reasonable questions and appropriate to ask, but at every single vote, in two places, at the ballot box and at town meeting, our residents rose to the occasion to approve the projects that we asked them to do. And why? Because we all care about our community and we all recognize the need. And I think that collectively, those projects were proposed and financed and managed in a conservative way to meet the needs without going crazy on the cost and the size and scale. And I don't see this being any different. It's a bigger number, costs go up. But we are a community, and I've used this analogy at town meeting in the past when folks have come in and said in tighter budget times that we need to close our library, or we need to close our senior center, or we need to reduce services in an area. And the analogy that I've drawn is that we are as a community similar to a woven wool blanket. If you pull one thread from that blanket in the middle and you pull it out, the blanket begins to unravel. You don't have a community any longer. So whether you use the school or not personally, whether you use the library or not personally, whether you... whether you, you know, need the services of public safety or not personally, we are a community. The senior center applies the same way. It's incumbent upon us to view this as a community effort. And I think historically, Tuxbury has done that. So I'm optimistic that residents will find their way to support this particular ask. And while there are complexities to it, and there are legitimate questions and concerns, the plan that you've put forward, in my opinion, is the most comprehensive and appropriate. And at the end of the day, we all have to make that individual decision about all of those questions and complexities, and in my view, look at it in the macro and in the whole. But as a town, we have put ourselves in the best position to do this. We need and we have to continue, and I believe that you will and your committee will, and I trust that our town manager and other leaders will continue to do so, and that is to do two things, to make sure that the immediate abutters have their needs and attentions tended to in an appropriate manner, and that the costs, as we get deeper into this project, hopefully, we continue to manage them as efficiently and effectively as possible so that we can come back, like the high school, with an end product that is spot on the numbers that we set out to meet. And we don't have overruns and unanticipated expenses. Those are the things that I think we need to focus on. And if we can accomplish that, we've accomplished a lot in our community, and something that we can be proud of, and we can move our community for the next 20 years or more forward in a much more positive way from an educational front, but also in the context of all of those ancillary benefits that support the investment in our town and allow us to do these projects at the maximum or most efficient way that we can. So I think people should be proud of where we are. I recognize it's a huge tax ask individually, but we've worked literally for years to get ourselves to this position where we could make this ask. And hopefully, people will see the value behind that. So those are my comments. Thank you.
All right, very good. I'm going to jump in. I know it's getting late, and I see Mr. Bob Fowler yawning, yawning back there. I always pick on my friend, Bob. So first and foremost, I always pick on Bob. First and foremost, 60 to 70 years, I see all the neighboring communities struggling or coming up as well, as far as a 60 or 70-year-old building. You know, if you ride by, I have relatives that ride by it, I mean, they literally look like, like empty buildings of Detroit. So you showed a couple of pictures inside. I'm going to steal a line from someone on the planning board, I think it was perfume on a pig or lipstick on a pig. So even if you put the dollars in the school, it's not improving the teachers or the, or the education. So I think that's important to note, especially the cost just to fix it, 22 million, 22 million, even for the field, 7 million versus 9 million, a new field, and to get those dollars reallocated is a big thing. How many students altogether is it, 700 plus?
795.
700 plus. And I'm not on social media, I'm not on Facebook, I'm not on Twitter, I'm not on any blogs because of my work. However, this little thing called the phone goes off all the time. So a lot of the folks say, you know, it's only 2 through 4, dot, 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 but 700-plus students. And you talked about the equipment for the special needs. It's really incredible. Now, I'll move to the field, because again, that's where a lot of the social media starts in town, whether it's blogs, Facebooks, or otherwise. At the end of the day, we're not adding fields, we're simply, let's call it upgrading, are replacing the existing fields that exist. I mean, right? Fair to say. And, and every component. And Mr. Dick already made a bunch of analogies where my mother comes and she has to drive to my house to use the facilities, rather embarrassing. And when you travel with the student athletes to different fields, you're like, holy mackerel, what a difference. And so when you just, right now, I know it's local to football, and they typically use it four months a year, and now we can open it up to all athletes, including the elementary school, including the Ryan. It's a net, it's a game for all students. And we talk about, I don't think this is a stretch, but we talk about the opioid crisis and not having our kids somewhere to go. And I see on social media, my phone rings, let's take that field away. Crazy. Let's give our kids more opportunity to play, to have fun, to be student athletes on that particular field. So I think it's important to say, to state that we're not taking anything away. Now, if we were adding, in addition to dot, 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 then I think that's a real conversation. And as far as the, we had a gentleman tonight, and, and I do get the cost, I think it was Mr. Dick. Listen, this is a very big nut for residents. You know, it's a huge, significant ask of the residents, so, and as selectmen, we need to listen on both sides, because there's always two sides to every story. So it's a huge cost, and we're hearing that. But as far as the order of operation, where we do a vote, and then I want to say, we get to the nitty-gritty, and I, oftentimes, I go to the planning board meetings, and this order of operation is go get the plans approved, then we go to next levels of, of the plan. So I think this is the same case, because I think the gentleman or several residents were concerned with drainage. So could the conservation committee, as an example, let's say it votes through, I'm just hypothetical, the vote goes through, could the conservation committee ever say, wait, timeout? The plans on paper look beautiful, however, we have a big concern after doing more due diligence. Could that ever be the case?
The entire project, the next phase is called design development. That's when the project actually gets designed to the next level, and that's where the conversation between the conservation commission, planning board, we get their input, we change drawings, we change the specs, we go and do that throughout the phase. So we want everybody's input. The, the design is not set in any way except for the cost. That's where we are. But the, the, the design itself, the technical aspects, will get developed in the next phase.
So it's absolutely, that could change based on ongoing investigation and ongoing due diligence of our boards as we go through the process?
Absolutely.
Okay.
That's, that's typically what happens.
And I think that's very fair.
Move a roadway here, move a parking lot here, move, you know, that's kind of what happens.
And I think that's very fair for the abutters, you know, and they've been to meetings and I've seen the same faces. So I think that's their big concern is, you know, once we get the vote, that's it, we're done. So I think that's important for the residents to understand where we're not done. This is part of the order of operation where we go through the process. And I will let the residents speak for two minutes, again, just to be on the record, and we need to go back and forth, but I think it's important for them to speak their mind in this big public forum. Mr. Dennis Francis.
Yes, Chairman, I may comment on that too, is when we did the high school project, and we try to mention this at our, at our community meetings, once this project is complete, that doesn't mean we wash our hands and go away. We were still doing things for the high school abutters, three, four years after the, after the building was open. So we'll continue as a community also, once the building is complete and, and it's occupied, in terms of still listening to concerns and any changes that we might have to make. So it's not just that, you know, once this is done, we walk away and that's it. We'll, we'll still be there for, you know, for the community, and if there's changes that have to be made, then there's changes that have to be made. Because we still did that, like I said, at the high school, long after the high school opened.
Wonderful. And I've seen that at, at our level, the selectman level, especially the planning board level, when they get a pretty, when it's on paper, then when you really start rolling up your sleeves. So again, it's just, I hope the residents understand, you know, we're, we're going through the process. But with all due respect, you know, the, the feedback is welcome. And last but not least, we do, we did form a committee. So again, hypothetical, we have to go through the vote, you know, we have the oldest former governor, we'll vote on this collectively as a town. The big question come up, what about the two properties? You know, the Trahan. And so we did form a committee. We had a handful of residents that want to be on that committee, and we're going to have representation from the different boards. But we didn't put on hold, but what we're going to do is advertise more folks to be on that committee, because we got a handful of applicants. And we said, hey, we have 30 days, we're going to make a vote. And remember, if we do make a vote, if it's, and then I get a, obviously, we don't need a committee, but if it's affirmative or positive, then we're going to form that committee. And we're going to have a lot of residents, again, through Facebook and then through this little thing called a phone, they're saying, what are we doing with these buildings? What are we doing with the buildings? And just to let the residents know, it's a, what's it called, a blank canvas. We're going to form a committee with a bunch of smart people, get her on the table, leave no option off the table, you know, whether it's 10, 20, 30, 40, 50 options, because a lot of like, let's say it, sell it. I've heard senior housing, veteran housing, open space, whatever the case may be, but that's going to be, again, a decision not from the committee, but ultimately, we'll have to bring that in front of the town meeting like we always do for every vote, regardless of we approve or not approve. So I think that's very important for the residents to understand where we, the residents, are going to decide ultimately what we do with those properties, because, you know, that's been talked about a ton, more sold to the cost. Anyway, Mr. Dennis Francis.
And I think, Mr. Chairman, as Mrs. Stronach mentioned, at that building committee meeting was early on in this process, we thought as a building committee, that there would be no members on this building committee on that committee, so it would be totally separate from anything that we do. I mean, there'll be school committee members and stuff, but anybody that's on that building committee will not be on that committee to keep it totally transparent and open.
Very good. Exactly. That's the whole formation of the committee, no agenda, throw everything on the table and see what the residents want, can benefit the residents, and obviously, like I said, there will be a vote. So I'm not going to repeat any other of what my peers echoed. So at this point, what I'd like to do, I know it's getting late, but I promise, whenever residents come in this boardroom, I'm always open for discussion. So what I'd like to do, if any residents, just take a few minutes, and again, just to get on the record, you may want to reply, you may not want to reply, that's up to you and our board, but I want to, I would always want to hear our residents. So with that being said, any residents, I would like to grab the microphone at this time.
Someone over there.
Oh, yeah, how are we gonna, why don't we, um...
I think Dennis could, Dennis could stand up.
You can belt it out, Mr. Delaney. Belt it out.
Yeah, I'm Jay Delaney, 140, I'm Patricia Drive, and of course, in Oylton, Tuxbury. The question I have is, in the very beginning, when you were showing the layout of the school, the drainage and all, I didn't see any place to put the snow. Parking lot, the whole parking lot, all the snow removed, I didn't see any place to put the snow. The next question is, one of our biggest problems with the Ryan School is the traffic that backs up onto Pleasant Street. We're spending $100 million, and I want to know, in that $100 million, is this situation on Pleasant Street dirty fixed? In other words, a place to put the pickups and the drop-offs that come in? I think for sure, when we built the Ryan School, we never felt as though we were going to have that many kids brought by a car or so. Now, younger grades, which I think is even more, I'm sure you've done a survey, but I'd like to see what you're going to do with the parking and to alleviate the problem that takes place on Pleasant Street.
Thank you, Mr. Delaney. Mr. Francis?
Can you answer that?
Okay.
Yeah, on the first, the, the snow storage question, so a plan has been submitted to DPW. They requested that plan. The snow storage plan is required by the MSBA in the next phase, but we already put one together. It's a preliminary plan, but all the snow storage anticipated at the level that the state requires us to calculate has been submitted to Tuxbury DPW. And then as far as the traffic, that one-way vehicular loop road that we spoke about is to get the kid, to get the traffic off of Pleasant Street. Hard to see.
What did the lights just roll?
Right now, what happens, right now, what happens is, so currently, just for the Ryan School, the drop-off ends about here. Parents are queued up, and they're backed and trafficked up on Pleasant Street, they come in here, it's about 125 feet, they drop off, they do a U-turn, and they go back out. It's extremely dangerous, and that's why you're seeing traffic backed up during pickup and drop-off. What this does, well, we had a lot of folks review this, the traffic engineers, which did do a comprehensive study of the entire area. That's why there's a one-way loop road around the entire campus. So one thing to understand is, the two schools, they arrive and they depart at different times. They have staggered drop-off, they have staggered start times, about 40, 45 minutes. So once, once school is finished dropping off, all that activity's gone, then the next school arrives. So that's a big, a big factor, because it's not both schools, 1,600 kids at once, it's, it's split. But this one-way loop road allows for that storage length of cars waiting in the queue. And the way it's calculated, if this is the drop-off at number six, for a 15-minute duration, that's how it's calculated, it goes all the way to here. And it'll happen. You're going to see parents stacked up along this road to here, and that calculates the drop-off for the new school. And as you can see, there's plenty of surplus space without it backing up to Pleasant. And once they drop off, there's enough length here to pace it back out to a right and left-hand turn. And then another aspect, when we shift to the buses, the buses will not circulate through the campus for drop-off for the school. They'll come in off of Pleasant, and they're handled right in front of the Ryan School, they drop off here, number seven, for both schools, and then back out. So they do not interfere with the cars, they're handled right in front of the school, it's very efficient. They arrive, they drop off, and they leave. And that's how it's, we're handling the volume of vehicles on the site.
Very good.
Now, is there somebody there for the drop-off spots, six and seven? Is there going to be somebody there that, that may enforce that? In other words, what if the person wants to drop off at seven and lets the kid go at six?
All of our...
The kid drops out of the car.
All of our drop-offs are currently monitored. If you overlay this pickup and drop-off scenario within any of our existing schools, this is far more efficient with some of the challenges we have currently at the North Street, at the Heathrow, at the Trahan, at Duane. So this is actually much more manageable. Yes, we have staff that are out there, yes, they're monitoring that, yes, students come early, sometimes students aren't picked up, so we have to manage that continuously.
Well, you know, the thing that concerns me is when somebody gets dropped off before they're supposed to be dropped off, and then they start running across the street or whatever it may be, and the traffic that's going to be going through there. I just want to make sure that those spots are monitored and monitored properly so we don't have a car accident or one or the other.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Delaney. And I said, we're going to try to keep this rapid-fire. So, next, please.
Thank you, Greg Man, you talked earlier, you asked a gentleman about the pond...
Just, yeah, if you could speak up, I'm sorry.
Jim?
Yes.
You don't have a light for the...
They're not going to hear us.
Right. Can I, can you, can we, can we grab that one? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fowler.
We do have microphones. Again, they're taping, but thank you, Mr. Fowler.
I guess this works.
Just keep that, just like there, just, yeah. Again, I'm going to keep this...
I asked...
Yeah, go ahead.
You asked earlier about the pond situation. It wasn't just a pond, it's a pool. If you look at that field up there, right now, right now, they have a football field, they have a, a practice field, and then the, on the other side of a, a wetlands, which is about 40 feet wide by 100 foot, and there is the base, the sock, not, the softball field. So they're not showing that there's a, there's a, a finger of, of land that's coming straight down. If you move that thing down, it's like B all the way down and into that field. So it's going to come right where B is, it's coming straight down, yeah, straight down into like where 11 is and then back up. And at the very tip of that, where like 11 is, is the, the vernal pool that I'm saying is a vernal pool. So you have all that wetlands right in there. According to the Conservation Commission from 1989, they called it wetlands. So that's not even being considered in their design that they had over here. So you're going to have, you're either, if, if you're going to call it wetlands and discount that vernal pool, then you're going to have to fill that in and replicate that someplace else. Now, that's a major thing, because it's in the middle of your site. It's very hard to, to be moving things over or to the left or to the right. It's right in the middle of it. And I, I keep on, you know, this is a kind of like double talk that I keep on saying, they keep ignoring it, and I keep on saying, this is here, please look at it. This is here, please look at it. Oh, no, 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 we're just going to fill that all in. Well, you can't just fill it all in. If it's, if it, if it is just wetlands, yes, you can fill it in. But if it's a vernal pool, you can't fill it in. So you gotta, you got, this is, this is the, the, the 4,000-pound gorilla that's sitting in a room, and everybody wants to, everybody wants to deal with it. It's like, he's sitting there, you know, I know you want to have this, this, this plan, but there's a problem there. I'm all for the school. I, I would also be for the, for the, for the stadium if it was in another spot. You just, you're trying to put square pegs into a round hole, and nobody will accept that fact. And unfortunately, if this thing doesn't pass, it's because you've tied that stadium to your, to your school. I know everybody wants to... I know everybody wants a school, and I feel for you. I don't have any kids, but yes, I've gone, I went through this whole school system. I'm sixty, I'm sixty-two years old. I've lived here all my life. My parents have lived here, my grandparents have lived here. My grandmother was a librarian over there, my mother was a librarian over there. So, so I feel for this town. And I, and I, and to be perfectly honest with you, right now, I used to be proud to say that I was, that I came from Tewksbury. I said, "I graduated from Tewksbury," and everything like that. Right now, the little guy in Tewksbury is not treated the same way as the town. The town has its way of doing things, and they get what they want. If the little guy was asking for a, for a variance to put a deck on the back, "Oh, no, you can't do that." You know? So right now, I'm ashamed to be a member of Tewksbury. I won't tell people that. I'll tell people, "Don't go to your schools there." I says, "It's not a good town to be in. I'm very sorry about that." But, but I, I really feel this.
Thank you very much.
Grab that mic.
Could you just grab the microphone? Any other residents? All right, seeing, yeah, just the lights. All right, seeing none, so we're gonna, I don't think, I don't, I know, I don't know if we have a motion on the board, but good conversation, it was a lot of information. We spent a ton of time. I know it's getting late, but it was a worthy, you know, this is a, as Mr. Johnson said, a big nut for the town and a big decision for the town. So I think the conversation, the questions were very, very worthy. So with that being said, any other further questions, comments from the board?
I would like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that the board support the elementary building presentation and the vote moving forward for April sixth.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I have a second, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
The chair says aye as well, so the motion carries. Thank you very much for the presentation, a lot of good stuff. Closing comments?
For the building committee, and more importantly, the students in town of Tewksbury, thank you very much for your support, we appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Okay. And I think, getting back to the board here, I know it's super late. I think at this point, we're at board member reports, I'm not gonna take a recess. Mr. Todd Johnson. Oh, actually, let's wait a second, let's wait a second. Folks, you're good. I don't use the hammer. We still have some business to take care of, that's all. Thank you very much. All right, I think it's quiet. So at this point, like I said, I think we took care of all the business outside of board member reports. Mr. Todd Johnson?
I'll be brief, Mr. Chairman. The zoning bylaw committee met last evening and continues its work. We have a meeting scheduled for April ninth, and we're closing in on our final product. And hopefully, our target is May first to have a final draft, at which time, we will begin a series of community forums to solicit input, feedback, and educate those who are interested.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Mr. Brian Dick?
Nothing else to add to it. Chair, thank you.
Ms. Ann Marie Stronach?
I would just like to say that we have a local housing meeting, which was on March fifteenth, it's been, that was canceled. Our next meeting is April tenth, which is gonna be in conflict with this meeting, so I'm not sure if Mr. Sadwick is gonna change that meeting. So I just wanna kind of put that out there. And there is a potential project at the old police station that is being looked at, so I'm looking forward to hearing what that is. And I wanna thank the school department for providing access to the cable once a week, is it? So I'm really excited about that. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mark Kratman?
Beautification committee met on three nineteenth. They talked about the plastic bag, Dan, that's going into effect, that's gonna be starting in April. Talked about looking at a couple of new places for switch boxes that puts in the lot out there. And they also were drafting letters of businesses, thumbs up, for people that were actually maintaining and keeping their businesses clean and nice and making, take pride in their community. The Lowell Region Transit Board's meeting this Thursday, and again, an economic development meeting next Tuesday. So I'll bring more update after that.
Very good. Last but not least, we have a little thing coming up on April sixth called the town election. A big, big thing coming up. So I encourage all those to get out and vote. And I just wanna say, I wish, you know, I know we have a couple of select men and women up for reelection, so I wish you the best of luck, you know, through that process. So that's all I have. With that being said, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. I'll second that.
A motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
The chair votes aye as well. Good night.